Good evening. We would like to call to order the special meeting of the Vallejo City Council for June 7, 2022. And would you please rise with me and give the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor McConnell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Verdura Liga.
Present.
Council members Ariola.
Present.
Do.
Here.
Loretta Diaz.
Present.
Meisner.
Here.
And I will note for the record, Councilmember Brown is currently absent.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, would you please call Action Item 4A?
Adopt a resolution to accept Home Key Grant and provide notice to amend the Capital Grant and Contribution Fund, Number 221, Fiscal Year 2122 Budget, in the amount of $12,91,866.
And Avita, would you start the public sign-up clock, please? And if you do so, anyone wishing to address the council on this item, both in person or virtually, must either complete a speaker's card and place it in the speaker's box located at the far side of the extended dais, or raise their hand virtually by the end of the two-minute clock. Anyone submitting a card or a request for, or raising their hand virtually after the end of the two-minute clock will not be recognized. And Mr. Malone is, who's going to be giving the presentation?
Yes, I do. They're getting ready right now. And Natalie's going to start off.
Okay, Natalie, go ahead. Okay, whenever you're ready, you may proceed.
We're waiting for the computer to reboot so we can pull up our slides. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, Natalie Peterson, Interim Assistant to the City Manager. Before you this evening is a recommendation to, one, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to accept the Department of Housing/Community Development Department, HCD, grant award of Home Key Round 2 in the amount of $12.1 million. And, two, provide notice of intent to amend the Capital Grant and Contribution Fund, Number 221, Fiscal Year 2122 Budget, to recognize the Home Key Grant revenue in the amount of $12.1 million, and appropriate expenditures of $12.1 million during the eligible funding time period. Next slide, please. So what to expect during this presentation? We're going to provide some background on the project. Our partners will then go over the site plans, timelines, and program plan, and then provide next steps. With me this evening, we do have our partners for the presentation. We have Jake Medclaff from Firm Foundations via Zoom, Matt Smith from Factory OS, and Kevin Lewis from Shelter Inc. Next slide, please. So for some background, Home Key is a state program funded by the Department of Housing and Community Development, also known as HCD, to sustain and rapidly expand housing for persons experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness through the development of permanent or interim housing. The project that the city submitted is for a permanent supportive housing units. September of 2021, HCD announced the Home Key Round 2 NOFA. On January 5, 2022, staff came to council where a resolution was adopted to apply for the Home Key Grant. A few days later, on January 31, the city submitted their application. On May 10, the city received our acceptance letter from the application. On May 25, a courtesy notice went out to property owners and residents in Vallejo within a 500-foot radius. And that brings us to this evening, where we will hopefully be able to accept the funds and provide a public notice of intent to amend the budget per City Charter Section 703. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jake from Firm Foundation to discuss the development of the project. Next slide, please. As we hand it over to Jake, I just did want to note that this is a site map for where the project is proposed to be. And now Jake.
Good evening, everyone. Just checking in on the sound. Can everyone hear me in the chambers?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jake Medclaff, and I am the co-founder with my partner, Terrance Sennelack of Firm Foundation Community Housing. Really excited to be with you this evening and honored kind of to be in the chambers. We are a nonprofit housing firm that specializes in creating housing for the most vulnerable throughout the Bay Area. It's our goal as Firm Foundation to end involuntary homelessness through the creation of humanizing service-enhanced housing. Here in Solano County, as I'm sure that all of you are aware, we have a housing crisis. According to the latest point-in-time count, we have over 1,000 members of our community who are going to be suffering on the streets tonight. According to that same point-in-time count, 93% of those individuals, they want to be inside. And 82% of them have lived in Solano County for more than a year, majority of which for more than 10 years. Many of those individuals, I've had a chance to know them over my work in the last five years, are really suffering from physical disabilities, health issues, mental health struggles, addiction struggles. Many have been the victims of trauma and neglect. And I've come to realize, and I think many of us in this space have, that we really need mental health services, rehab services, medical services, but it's impossible to ask our unsheltered family to get healthy without a stable, safe, and secure home. We have to provide housing. The trauma of living outdoors on an everyday basis and what it causes is just not in an environment where people can recover. We need housing, and we need housing plus services. And that's exactly what we get a chance to do with an amazing kind of grant. I think we're one of the only seven grants in this last kind of extra round statewide to get this funding. We need that housing plus. So I'm honored and excited to be a part of this project that will save and change lives. I get a chance just to share with you briefly the development scope. So if you would go to the next slide. This is located on .53 acres on the site map that you just saw in the North Gateway District. It is currently undeveloped vacant land. It's zoned for 50 residential units per acre. And after applying the density bonus per California Density Bonus Law, that does make the parcel eligible for 48 units. We're all proposing 47 units of permanent supportive housing and one onsite manager unit. And also, according to the City of Vallejo Municipal Code, permanent supporting housing is a permitted use on that lot. Next slide. This is an incredible product. Our design team, we're working with Dolan Architecture, we're working with Factory OS, who you'll hear from in a second. We're also working with an incredible team of engineers and consultants who've done an incredible job designing this to be a really beautiful, humanizing, service-enhanced project that I'm very excited to be a part of. I can provide a manager unit, community gathering space, laundry facility, office space for the case managers that'll be working there, outdoor gathering space, and a rooftop deck. Next slide, please. I'm also excited to share with you that the cost of construction, according to our current budget per unit, is $340,000, which I know seems like a lot here, but it is 300,000 less than the average cost of construction for affordable housing units in the Bay. That's thanks to Factory OS. That's part of kind of what we do. That's thanks to a lot of our engineering team, who all are working together to make this project happen because they also believe that this project will change and save lives here in the city of Vallejo. Next slide. I just want to share with you a few of the development milestones. I mean, Home Key is an incredible program, but it has an incredibly tight timeline that makes this project super aggressive. We have, starting on May 10, a clock started when we got that acceptance letter, which is why this evening is so important. We have eight months to get 90% of the residents moved in. This really is only possible through partnership with the city. The planning department has been amazing. The building department has been amazing. And it's really also only possible through Factory OS's work, which you'll hear about in a second. We planned this Friday. Our planning application, our design team, our architecture and engineering teams have been working full speed with multiple people to get that done. Hopefully, by the end of the month, we need to get some funding into Factory OS's hands, but module production will begin. Building permit applications should be submitted shortly after that. On 7/15, we are anticipating with some review process in between those four weeks that you see there, hopefully getting the planning department approval. The modules don't take long to build. That's the beautiful part of a project like this. So it should be done by the end of July. Then we're looking at building permits, construction beginning, modular insulation. And then after the installation comes some post-modular construction around the outside. And then we are targeting, with all due speed and aggressive, 11023 temporary certificate of occupancy and residence moving in. You'll hear more about that process from our partners at Shelter Inc., who have also been really incredible. After that, we will finish some of the non-life-saving, you know, pieces in that. We've got to make sure we get the TCO, that water's on and power's on, and heat is on, and all emergency procedures are in place. But we'll still have some landscaping and some outer design to do. So we're hoping to finish the entire project by 31023, which is still incredibly aggressive. I would love to share with you on the next slide, some renderings of the project. I think it's just turned out incredibly beautiful. Our design team really went deep into the kind of history of Vallejo, really wanted to create something that matched who we are. And so they created this dynamic. You can see the main building there. This is made out of modular. Around the skin outside of it is essentially like a plaster stucco, but it matches the same color scheme as a lot of what you see on Mare Island. We're hoping to use some reclaimed wood from Mare Island and other places of Vallejo to kind of just design the outside of that structure. It extends on the ground level into our community room with the glass fronting. So really trying to create a seamless entry where people can feel welcomed and cared for. Above that is a rooftop deck. We want to create as much outdoor space as possible. Got one view of it during sunshine and one view during sunset. We're really proud of this work. You also see on the end, back in the brick color, if you move to the right of the picture, those are some other units on the ground. We've created some units that are not part of the building so that Shelter Inc. has a little bit of wiggle room to place people in the right space. Next slide. Also included is, inside is a courtyard. We really do believe, as Firm Foundation, I think this whole team does, as well as your city staff, that we need to move beyond a conversation of around the homeless, that every single individual who does not have a home this evening has a name, has a story, has a, you know, they're someone's son, or daughter, or brother, or sister. And so we really need to humanize this housing crisis. And so we want to create humanizing housing that you and I and everybody on this call and in this chamber would want to live in. And so I love what our team has done with this interior courtyard, created some great living space. There's some barbecues in there so people can be human, create community, and have a really thriving place to live. One of the key partners, I'm going to throw it to Matt. This is only really possible with a local company, Factory OS, and that's really the only way we can get to this eight-month mark. And they've been incredibly helpful helping design and kind of create these units. Each unit is 305 square feet and has, you know, within it, a full bathroom and shower and stove top and refrigerator and storage space. And really had a chance to tour the units. They're really quite well done. So I'm going to throw it to you, Matt, and to share about Factory OS and your part of this project.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, Mayor McConnell and the rest of the City Council staff. Want to tell you just a little bit about Factory OS. You know, I know some of you have been to our factory, but we are a housing production company, really a modular construction company that focuses on housing here in Vallejo. You know, we've got two factories here in Vallejo, and we employ over 400 workers here in Vallejo, many of which live in Vallejo as well. Thought and goals of Factory OS is let's reduce the cost and the time that it takes to build housing, specifically affordable housing here in the state of California. We are about four years old, really three and a half years in production, and I'm happy to say that we just finished our 13th project. So we've now built over 1,800 units of housing in the state of California. Furthest north we've gone is Truckee. Project 13 will go to Los Angeles. Project 12 is right here in Vallejo on Sacramento Street. If you want to go to the next slide. Now, so we're really able to have produced so many units in really such a short period of time due to some of our partners. One partnership that I really want to talk about tonight and then just show you a quick video is our labor partnership. So think about the cost of construction. A big driver of cost of construction is the shortage of labor. Younger generations are not getting into the trades. Older generations are retiring. The labor pool is shrinking. As a result, costs are increasing. We've partnered with the NorCal Carpenters Union. So we are wall-to-wall NorCal Carpenters Union. We employ about 400 factory workers, all of which are part of the union, with benefits that you would get being a part of the union. 50% of those workers were not in construction prior to joining Factory OS. So we've gone out, we've gone to minimum-paying jobs, we recruited them to Factory OS, taught them how to build what we're building in our factory, given them the skills and the knowledge to never be unemployed again if they do not want to be. Another big partner of ours is the Lancy Street Foundation. So 25% of our workers are second chance. So whether that be formerly incarcerated, formerly homeless, or battling substance abuse, that makes up another big portion of our workers. So, you know, we're really trying to address this housing crisis full circle. And I think on that, I'm going to transition into a little video that just kind of highlights some of the stories of our workers. Check sound.
Let's face it, for the middle-class individual, living in the Bay Area is almost becoming a possible thing. It's not just here, though. It's Los Angeles, it's San Jose, it's any of our large urban settings.
Housing demand versus housing supply, very low supply. People's income's not keeping up. And then the cost of building that supply spiraling out of control.
We're trying to change the paradigm all the way from the very basic elements of what we do. From the folks that are putting the screw guns to the drywall, to the people that are turning their faucets on as residents.
I'm a lead in the rough plumbing department.
I'm an interior framer.
I'm in charge of all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing.
I'm currently working with doors and trim installation.
Maintain all the yards out there.
I work in the ceiling department.
My job mostly entails dealing with shipping and receiving and most of the warehouse operators.
We don't view our workers as factory workers. We see them as people who work in factories, which helps us create more supportive programs here at the factory and a better working environment. I have a lot of contact with the workers and learned a lot about their lives.
Been looking for work. Got blessed through one of my AA classes. Met a friend and he introduced me to this job. It's a blessing, you know. It's a blessing for my family. It's a new chance, you know. Got two young kids that just came into this world.
A lot of people try and start, a new, fresh start, and it's hard for them to find jobs and really give them like the motivation to like succeed. This company does that for a lot of people who've had a hard life and want a new way to live. This company opens that door for them and gives them the opportunity to prove themselves.
I started at the same level I bring everybody in. And I always tell my employees that. I started exactly where you're at. And now I run a department. And so the upward mobility is there. It's available to you if you want to put in the effort.
I had kind of a rough road coming here. At 16 years old, I was homeless, on the streets, living in my truck behind a Walgreens. I mean, at this point, we've built over 1,500 homes, 600 of which are serving the formerly homeless. And something like that, I mean, that's a huge impact.
It's exciting to know that there's new change coming and that we're a part of it.
A lot of guys here that are giving their second chances. And because of that, they're turning around and giving second chances to other people. And, you know, it comes full circle. These guys are helping people. And one of the best ways to help yourself is to help other people.
They judge you for what you are today and what you do for this company. And that's about it. What you bring to the table is how far you will climb up the ladder.
I came in as a cleaner and anything like that. As the time passes by, I get to learn more.
They pick it up pretty well. I don't know if it's what I'm teaching or what we're teaching, but they grasp it pretty fast. Because we have to keep it going for production wise, so they got to grasp it pretty quick.
There's really a genuine spirit of community and a genuine spirit of everybody striving towards the same goal.
I have had a rough life due to the choices I've made. I never gave myself the opportunity to see what I'm worth and what I'm capable of. And this job has given me that opportunity and how it makes me feel inside. It makes me feel whole, you know, just to see my kids' faces when I come home and get off of work. You know, they have this little song that they sing when I'm on my way home, and it's Daddy's Coming Home. Man, it's, this job has really, really like made my heart full.
Our mission statement should really be called "family." It's the families in which we're able to build residential units to house so they can live in a reasonable proximity of where they need to live to make a living and to function. It's the family in which we've allowed people to make a good union living through the carpenters' union and be able to have health care, vacation pay, and a 401K that's going to allow them to grow and move into the future with promise and hope.
This has changed my life, my family, my wife. I'm a first-time homebuyer right now, to where I'm probably the first person in my family in Vallejo that's able to purchase a home. And it's all stemmed to Factory OS and the opportunity that they gave me. And I'm appreciative and look forward to the future.
So if you want to hit the next slide. Bottom line is, we as a company and we as a society succeed if our people succeed. Together, our mission is to build for them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further presentations from staff?
It's continuing, yes. Next slide, please.
So my name's Kevin Lewis with Shelter Inc. And one obvious thing that happens is people's concern about permanent supportive housing in their neighborhoods. When it comes to a project like this, it's a beautiful building, great builders, great designers, but the true question of the neighborhood and the community is how's it going to be operated? And how are we going to make sure there is not a serious impact to the neighborhood for which the building goes to? And we have designed the programming between both operating as well as the services plan, as you see on, excuse me, as you see on the slides. We will have an onsite property manager who will live onsite. We will be working with the Solano County Coordinated Entry System. That is a requirement of HCD, so we will do that. And we will prioritize homeless individuals in Vallejo. Our management hours for the management office will be Monday through Friday from 1 to 5. Where that might be of a concern to people, you'll understand the reasoning behind that in just a moment. We will do lower barrier housing approach, which is housing first. And part of that is, yes, it's state law in California that you must do that, and you must be trained in housing first. But through the history of permanent supportive housing, it is the number-one problem of getting people into permanent supportive and as well standard affordable housing. affordable housing. We will have experienced management at the property that have been doing permanent supportive housing for a number of years. Myself, I have been in it for over 10 years. I have worked at Skid Row. I have worked in the Tenderloin. Permanent supportive housing is almost my life. And our management staff will have a first-level financial management of the property as well as oversight. Next slide, please. We do have a resident services plan that will have three full-time case managers on staff. That is unique to this property because of the funding style of the property and how there will not be a debt service, so it can be a self-sustaining property, which will not require more money from the city of Vallejo or the county of Solano. We will coordinate outside services that we cannot provide within the property. There will be life skills classes, that's budgeting, stress management, hygiene, how to be a good neighbor, computer skills, job training, nutrition, and it goes from there. One of the benefits for this property is that we will be able to design the services in the property to meet the needs of the community rather than meet the needs of a contract that would dictate how we provide services. There will also be public transportation assistance that will be given to the residents. We will have the common areas for socialization and group activities. One of the most important things in permanent supportive housing is not that you have a management staff that's going to force the rules upon you. If you're not used to doing that, and if you haven't been housed for a number of years, you're not used to following rules. How do you follow rules? Our services staff will help you understand why and work with you and the needs that you have to be able to thrive in the community of the building. Excuse me, and as I noticed, as I stated earlier, will be a self-sustaining, self-funding program of services in the property, which will allow for flexibility of change to meet the needs of the property. Next slide, please. Permanent supportive housing is an evidence-based housing intervention that combines ongoing rental assistance with supportive services such as health and mental health care for chronically homeless households. Permanent supportive housing properties are not a shelter environment. They are apartments that the person can reside in without a lease ending. When you move in, you follow the rules like everybody else that has an apartment, you keep it clean, you pay the rent, you can continue living there until you decide to This property will be able to house more than single individuals. A family is not two adults and a child. A family can be one adult and a child. Because the size of the units are studios, you are allowed to house two people in a unit. So if there is a single parent with a child, they will be able to live in this property. Excuse me, the population, statistically speaking, also doesn't have automobiles. We have heard of concern regarding parking around the property and what that might or may not impact the neighborhood. Statistically, they don't come with automobiles. And at the point that they do want to buy automobiles, they are looking to reside in other places because they've become successful in the property. The strategy for this property is unique in its nature, as again, it will be free of debt service after the initial funding has been obtained to build and set up the property operations. This allows for more flexibility to adjust the services and to meet the individual needs of each resident. Providing for the needs of the resident in the property is the highest priority, to be good stewards of the property, service provider for the population, and neighbors to the greater community. Next slide, and I think that's it. Yes, thank you.
So, next steps for this. One, there are no entitlements are needed for this project. The state has made Project Home Key ministerial, so this will just go to the building division. Again, based on the state's processes, this is a project is exempt from CEQA requirements. However, it does need to go through a National Environment Policy Act review, more commonly referred to as NEPA. The NEPA is scheduled to be completed by August 1st of this year. Compliance with NEPA per 24 Code of Federal Regulation Part 58, an environmental assessment of the project will be conducted, and staff anticipates this will result in a finding of no significant impact. Staff will not allow any grading or construction until and unless this project has completed with the NEPA. Building permits are required, and the developer firm Foundation will be working closely with the building department through this process. If approved tonight, Factory OS is ready to begin the process of building the modular units and work with the quick timelines. Assuming no unforeseen issues, this project is scheduled to be completed and opened in early January of 2023. Next slide. So again, before you this evening are the two recommendations that I read earlier. One, adopting a resolution to accept the funds, and then two, providing the notice of intent to amend the capital grant and contribution fund and appropriate the expenditures of 12.1 million during the eligible funding period. Next slide. With that, I would like to hand it over to Gillian Hayes to have a few words. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, public, for attending. Just want to break it down a little bit. So due to the homelessness epidemic in the state, the California Department of Housing and Community Development made this Home Key funding available for quick solutions, immediate provision of housing options. That's why this funding was set aside. So the Home Key Round 2 grant funding is meant to provide those solutions for permanent or interim housing options for the homeless in this short implementation timeframe. So 1.45 billion was made available in fiscal year 2122 with the goal of creating 10,000 new housing units in California. The governor set aside an additional 150 million beyond that initial funding round and awarded seven projects in the state. We were one of those seven. It's an honor to be awarded alongside high-profile projects throughout the state, including city and county of LA, Fresno, San Jose, and San Joaquin County. So one of seven in the state, Vallejo's project. Grant funding does have restrictions, as Natalie outlined, to make sure that the housing is built quickly. They want the funds expended within eight months from the date of the award, no CEQA review, no entitlement review, and all the components that Natalie went through. And that's in order to streamline the process and get the housing on the ground as soon as possible. So that's the intent of this funding. We're super thankful for our partnership with the team members involved with this project, very professional, great to work with, and very experienced in this area of permanent supportive housing. You did receive a last-minute communication, I believe, on your dais or via email, not sure how it was sent to them, from American Canyon. So just wanted to let you know that the city attorney from American Canyon forwarded that to us five minutes before the meeting, so we got that through the mayor's office. Thank you. That is on your desk. We have city attorney Neb and Mr. Reisner available to address if you have any concerns related to that communication. I want to remind the council and the public tonight, we are just approving the acceptance of the grant funding and amending the budget to accept that money. The project application and approval to submit for the grant was approved and made public January 25th. So all the details of the project were included in that project application in January. So this is the step to accept the grant award that we've been awarded. Notification is not required through this funding opportunity, but we did send out courtesy notices in January, and we also did send out courtesy notices before tonight's meeting because we felt that that was the right thing to do so that people in the area knew that this project could potentially be moving forward. So again, we need to sign the funding agreement and return that to Department of Housing and Community Development by June 23rd, or they can reject the funding. So I just wanted to clarify some of those points with you all tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you. This funding allows us to comply with a lot of our city council goals, our county capsulano JPA homelessness plan, and of course, all of our state's goals regarding homelessness. To quote the governor, "This funding will help us get people off the street and into supportive housing with services." We're really excited that we were chosen as one of the seven projects in the state to move housing options forward very quickly, and we recommend that the council authorizes acceptance of this grant and amending the budget so that we can get moving in our eight-month timeline. So that concludes our staff presentation. The whole project team and staff are here for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time, we'll move into the public comment portion of the hearing. Madam Vice President, do we have any public speakers in person?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to call them.
How many do we have?
Six.
Six, okay. We'll give them three minutes each. Call them in order, please.
Yes, Ms. Margaret Sharky. Crespo, is this Norma Crespo? And Patricia Loefus, Rensheller.
Three minutes is a very short time to respond to this project, but first, let me say, there's not a single person here tonight that doesn't want a solution to the homeless problem which impacts Vallejo residents and businesses every single day. Homelessness is the norm in Vallejo, and the residents are moving out of Vallejo every day because they're fed up with the lack of a pragmatic, timely, and cost-effective approach to the homeless carousel that exists in Vallejo. There are a number of concerns with this particular project, and this is not a "not-in-my-backyard" response, rather, it's taken from a general overview. First of all, we just received notice on this very recently. Second of all, American Canyon was not notified at all. They received no notification. I represent a lot of the businesses across the street, and we deal with homelessness on a daily basis. But what I want to know is, what are the federal government guidelines for site criteria? And why is this location being chosen? It's a half-acre, it's incredibly small for this project, it's at the entrance to Vallejo, it's going to be an iconic building on the hill. Why isn't it a hotel? Why has all the commercial been driven to American Canyon and not Vallejo? Right now, location and criteria, you know, they require library, grocery store, pharmacy, public park, medical clinic, senior center, social service for the homeless, public transit. This location doesn't have all of those things. Secondly, it's the wrong size and the wrong design. Look to other successful projects in the Bay Area, and you will see the common denominator is a large land area with small transitional, single-story residents. The drawings are critical to conceptualizing estimated budgets, and I don't think the city even has any yet. So chances of meeting it on their budget and timeline is pretty much impossible. You know, per Home Key rules, applicants must be guaranteed operational costs for prospective projects that are secured for at least five years. Do you guys have those? Are they in writing? Where are these funds coming from? Will anything come from the general fund? The city doesn't need to make this decision immediately. By accepting the funds, the city is going to be responsible for this project for up to 55 years. Is this what we want? We all want to solve the problem. There are ways to do it, which are quick and effective, using modular housing or using pallet housing. I have a lot more to say.
We do limit.
But I'll just hand it to somebody else.
Thank you very much.
Just want to say Vallejo continues to make the wrong decisions, and you're just betting on the wrong horse here. It's the wrong property. You know, I have a poster that I want to share with you guys.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our second speaker.
Homer Crespo? Or is this Norma Crespo? Can't read your handwriting. Sorry about that.
By trade, I am architect. I was. And my biggest concern and worry since I chose Vallejo as my town to live is why it's so much different as soon as we cross the north boundary of American Canyon. And I always ask myself how American Canyon in just 20 years have done what Vallejo have not been able to do for 100. Why we have a clear zoning, and it's very strict, clear, and direct. I've been in other meetings in which why we don't zone commercial in main avenues, but I don't get any response. This type of housing is the most challenged that I've ever seen because involves an illness. This is much difficult than senior housing. For example, I'm sure that the building doesn't have open doors because people will jump when they get depressed. So this is more sensitive than just putting people in boxes. Mental illness could kill you if you don't have options. Enclosing 40 families inside a building is not the best solution. But we have to go vertically, because this side is so tiny, that the only solution is to go vertical. In a bigger side, I'm sure that Vallejo has most sites much cheaper than this one available along Sonoma Boulevard, towards the bridge. And I question myself, what was the side criteria to choose that tiny, isolated place to put such a sensitive type of housing? And I don't think I have enough time to research, but it's a very interesting type of challenge. And I don't question the need. What I question is the side criteria. And I hope that this type of project will have a little bit more time for analysis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our third speaker.
Patricia Loefus, Rensheller, I think, sorry if I mispronounced your name, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Patricia Loefus-Renshler, and I, my family has been in this town, this city, for almost 100 years. My grandfather came here, built up an area, my father and mother worked it for 70 years. I didn't realize this project was going on. I don't know even where it's at. But I'm here because there's a homeless problem on Couch Street, and it's impacting several businesses. I have been calling nonstop to get something done. It's not because these people would definitely not be the ones moving into this project. There's no way. There's drugs, there's prostitution, you name it, it's happening right there across from Mach 1. My property is on Broadway. I had, my parents were there for, like I said, almost 100 years. And my aunt used to come down here and Zell and question a lot of things going on in the city. But my biggest concern is this mess. It's got to be a toxic waste dump by now. Coming into Vallejo, I come down Broadway, the recycling center has several cars parked alongside the street, they're all abandoned, they should be tagged, towed, I don't care if they're living in them or not. I'm to the point now, after so many years of dealing with this, my daughter has picked up needles, cleaned them up, and this has gone on long enough. These people are not the ones that this project is going to help. These people need mental health, or they need to be in jail. And I don't know what your ways of handling this are, but I think it's time for Vallejo to step up and come up with some solutions. I'm just grateful my father isn't here to see this mess, because he always thought Vallejo was the best thing in the state of California, and I'm glad he's not here to see what a ghetto it's turned into. But anywhere along Couch has got to be cleaned up, or these businesses are going to leave. And then you're going to be stuck with people with empty buildings. We've all had our crime problems. I had a man in a wheelchair a couple weeks ago with no pants on. So if I find these people on my property, I'm not going to call the police anymore, I'm going to handle it myself, because I'm tired of dealing with it. So if you people aren't smart enough to get this town in shape and bring some really good businesses in here, then I feel sorry for you, because you don't belong up here if you can't handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Our next speaker, Vice Mayor.
Next three speakers, Karina Servente, David Schwartz, and Russell Carpenter.
Dear Mayor McConnell and council members, I own a residence at 18 Gulf Inch Drive in American Canyon, which backs up to the homes in the city of Vallejo. I am opposed to the four-story homeless facility proposed with Vallejo on Broadway on the vacant land south of the Dog Park in the city of American Canyon. As an American Canyon Parks and Recreation Commissioner, I am familiar with the requirements of AB 1234 and the Brown Act. You haven't described the project you're acting on. I do not see how adequate notice was given to me or other homeowners and businesses that are located within 300 to 500 feet of the proposal. that are located within 300 to 500 feet of the proposal. Also, it is not clear from the information in the staff report how public service resources would be affected, such as first responders, including fire, police, and EMS. I have reviewed Vallejo documents and references to state law, and it's not clear whether such impact is not subject to a public hearing, where the city of Vallejo would be required to give notice to not only some residents and businesses, but also those in nearby American Canyon. As an interested resident in American Canyon, I have commented on several American Canyon projects for their environmental review under the State Environmental Quality Act. A homeless facility that is four stories will demand both Vallejo and American Canyon services, especially police. How is Vallejo going to address that demand when current efforts are not enough? Further, the inadequate law enforcement in Vallejo is an impact on the environment on which this should be mitigation. More police, yet the staff report doesn't state how the city of Vallejo will provide more police protection for the proposal. In summary, to comply with the Brown Act, open meeting law, this proposal needs to be more fully described and properly noticed for all property owners and businesses, and to make sure that there are no adverse impacts on either American Canyon or Vallejo. I think more detailed and accurate information on the project and notice of all next steps should be made before you act. You also have a copy of this that I emailed you about an hour ago. And just to add a little bit, this, the staff and the project managers, they said that they gave notice, I did not receive notice, and I live about 300 feet from this project. It's also next to a kids' park and the middle school and high school bus stop. So keep in mind all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next speaker, please.
David Schwartz. And Russell Carpenter.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is David Schwartz. I'm the Deputy City Attorney for the City of American Canyon. American Canyon has submitted a written comment letter regarding this proposed project and the development of a 48-unit transitional housing project. I have hard copies of that communication right here. American Canyon has, is, excuse me, as discussed in more detail in those written comments, American Canyon is committed to working with Vallejo and all neighboring agencies to provide a safe and welcoming environment with ample housing opportunities and much-needed support services for unhoused persons. However, public notice, proper notice to the public and sufficient review of a housing project's impacts on the environment, on traffic, on noise, and other considerations is not only mandated by existing law, it is also necessary to inform neighboring residents and businesses of what development projects are being contemplated in their communities. American Canyon has been contacted by various homeowners, residents, and business owners that have expressed valid concerns regarding the proposed project, including the lack of information on any details of the project and its impacts on those surrounding communities. One concern is proper public notice. Under the Brown Act, public agencies must provide information on their meeting agendas that reasonably, with reasonable specificity, describe what action is being taken. Unfortunately, the agenda item for tonight's meeting gives no indication that the receipt of the grant funding is tied with the construction of a large-scale housing project. That information could only be gleaned from auxiliary documents, which themselves do not articulate basic information of the 48-unit project, such as its location, which is only listed by APN number. Simply stated, members of the public, if looking at the agenda, would have no clue that a large project for constructing housing facilities is being contemplated by the mere acceptance of the grant funding that's contemplated on the agenda. Nor would they know the location of the project. Nor is tonight's meeting shown on the meeting calendar that's posted on Vallejo's public website, which completely omits tonight's special meeting. Neither of the two recommended actions purports to authorize this construction. Second, there are concerns that accepting the grant will pre-commit Vallejo to the proposed project, despite there being no indication that the project's impacts on the environment, traffic, parking, noise levels, or other issues have been or even will be properly analyzed. The staff report indicates that the project is anticipated to be exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. We respectfully disagree. For the exemption referenced in the staff report to apply, the project must not exceed a 10% increase on what is currently on the project site.
Thank you very much.
It is currently vacant land. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments, sir. Next, Mayor, next speaker.
Russell Carpenter. And then Ryan Misano.
Good evening. I'm here with my 92-year-old neighbor here. I've only been a resident around here for 23 years, Sam probably about the same time. Heard about this thing on Friday. I've had about, nah, 100 conversations with my neighbors since then, which apparently the majority chose not to show up, so I'm it. Anyway, I've had some candid conversations, actually, with some of you. And it's my understanding that this is for, this is for chronically homeless, chronically drug-addicted, and alcohol-addicted. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but if that is the case, these individuals are going to need substantial treatment and supervision. And to have this, the requirement of this, chronically homeless, alcohol, drug-addicted, mentally or physically disabled, regardless of criminal record, for requirement, no monitoring, no sobriety, I mean, this is insane, if this is the case. Now, if these are Section 8 people, I've got five counselors, social workers in my family, I've had friends and neighbors on Section 8. You know, that's nothing to be embarrassed about. But if these are the kind of people that's been described to me with the needs that they're going to have for this, to live sociably in this situation, it's going to require, you got 8:30 to 5 o'clock, two managers, one, it's two counselors for 48 people. What happens after 5 o'clock? I live there 24/7, and I don't know what these people are going to be doing after 5 o'clock, but who's watching them? If there's a police issue, a medical issue, fire issue, where are you going to go? You put this right on, right on the Vallejo-American Canyon border. I mean, really. You blindsided us, you know, four days ago, we got notice of this. Are you kidding me? Seriously? It's a beautiful project, I'm all for it, but it needs to be properly monitored, counselors, requirements of sobriety, and another location. Why is it on the border, the furthest distance possible from downtown Vallejo? What do you, I mean, seriously? The town is full of empty spaces and buildings. There were hundreds of other opportunities to place this in a much more appropriate location, and you chose to put it on our border. You know. All I want to do is ask if you could publicly read the letter from American Canyon, which you received.
Time.
To the group here. I haven't seen it, but I'd sure like to hear it.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, our next speaker, please.
Ryan Misano, and then Agnes Caban, and then Stefan Crespo.
Good evening, it is good to see everybody tonight, especially the new faces in the audience. Civic participation is a really good thing, and the more citizens from this city that come and get involved, the better off this city will be. Homelessness is a problem, not because of a lack of government intervention, it's a problem because of government intervention. It's the job of everyone and anyone to help the poor and the sick, except the government. It's not the government's job. And we would have money to help the homeless if we returned to before 1913 and we didn't have an income tax, then we'd have 40% to 50% more of our money that we could use to help those who need help personally, instead of asking an inefficient government to do what it never did well, and that is to take care of needs. BlackRock and Vanguard own nearly all corporations in the world. CEO is Larry Fink. They're aggressively buying up housing right now, they're raising the housing prices everywhere, California, all over the nation. This is causing our homeless problem. So if we need to get to the root of the problem, so it doesn't keep reoccurring. So I was just in Sacramento today, they have tent cities over there, as in every big city, they've got these tent cities, it's terrible. I don't know how people could live in that. And what we have is, we have an elite that lives in comfortable luxury, while you have people who barely have enough food for the daily necessities, and that's wrong. And then to make sure that they stay there, when people tell the truth about them, like myself and others, they have people who interrupt us and antagonize us, so that we are brow-beaten into silence. Because if everybody knew what I knew, there would be a revolution tomorrow morning, and this would be over, there'd be no homeless problem. That's a fact. And there are people who do not want that to happen, because that would end their power and their wealth and their corruption. But it is happening, it is going to happen. And those who stood for this system are going to have a lot to answer for. So, and you are going to be accountable, those who stood for this system. But anyways, the headquarters in New York of the Federal Reserve, they get to print out hundreds of trillions of dollars. You and I go to jail for printing out $1. These people print out as much money as they want, buy up all the housing, leave us in the most abject poverty, and then we're supposed to sit here and be quiet and be united and be peaceful and sit down and shut up? This is what we're expected to do, because we are the goyim, we're the sheep, we're the cattle, that's what we are. We're not citizens, we are all debt slaves, that's what we are right now. And America's founders fought that off, but we are currently right back in the same system they fought off. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Miss Misano. Our next speaker, please.
Agnes Caban, and then Stefan Crespo, please.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening to all the council members. I'm here on behalf of myself, I mean, my neighbors, my two neighbors, and myself. I have a sheet here, and I hope you don't mind me reading it. The reason I'm against the building of that shelter, not really a shelter, but it's a homeless building, let's put it that way. And the reasons why are this. Putting all of them in one place is a disaster waiting to happen. It's not going to solve their problem. Why don't you solve their problem first with mental issue, addiction, alcoholism, and everything else? I live on Falcon Drive, and it's so close to where I live. Putting that building, four floors, when I'm in my backyard, I'll be looking at that building. If you guys have that building close to your backyard, would you want to have that building in there? Absolutely not. My kids, my grandkids, go to the park, there's a dog park right beside it. And you guarantee that we will be safe going to the park, from our houses and back. Safety. I was driving from Sonoma Boulevard, I saw 10 RVs in front of CVS. Those are all homeless people. Where will these people park? In my street, because that's the closest street. Those people that's going to live in this place, most likely will have at least one car. 14 parking spaces for 48. That's a joke. The new building that's on Broadway, right in the corner with Mini, is a new apartment. A lot of the tenants park in the street. When you come out from American Canyon, going through Broadway to make a left, a Mini drive, time when the kids get off from school, the traffic is horrible. There's no street light, it's dark, there's no crosswalk, there's no pavement on the other side across the street for the people to walk. Is that safe? No. A trash, who's going to pick up the needles? That's going to be in there, most likely, there's going to be needles, everything, bottles, and things that, you know, they throw. Will there be a janitor?
Time.
Will the police be able to answer? You know, it's too many questions, so please, vote no.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next speaker, please.
Our last, last speaker is Stefan Crespo. And that's the last one.
After that, we'll go to our virtual speakers.
Good evening. Good evening, council members, good evening, Mayor. I come to you today as a humble business owner. I'm actually representing my store here. I came from work today because, very busy day at work. My brother is currently holding the stand right now. It's just us two, and we've been there for three years. We have, we have dealt with this problem for quite some time, but that's not really what I'm here to talk about. It seems that I'm not the only one who has not received notice of this particular, like, the most that I've learned about this project was today, through this presentation right here. None of the other tenants alongside my, alongside my business have received this notice. And I speak to my customers directly, day after day, over the course of three years. I know this community well, and I know these neighbors, they are practically my neighbors. And none of them have brought any concern for this to me, because they probably are not aware of it. And I'm learning more details as this whole thing is going along. The fact that this is, there's no particular zoning for it, the space is incredibly small, I have to look at it every day, a homeless encampment previously occupied the space where you are currently planning to build, and there's no restrictions for this tendency. The tendency that you may be taking into the, into your fold here are chronically ill, and I feel sympathy for them, I really, really do, but they need proper treatment, that they need proper help, and they need proper attention. And I don't think a small staff with this small building with details that the community is not aware of, I just feel skeptical about the entire thing. And with these few details, and with, I personally feel that the community is being bypassed in order to expedite this project, because I'm not the only one that appears to have received no notice for this. And I believe that by accepting the fund for today, you are committing to building this project. And by committing to build this project, we as a community will probably, will be left picking up the pieces, as some have put it, picking up literal needles off the street. And it's unfortunate. We do wish to help, but we feel that more time and consideration is needed, other sites, perhaps. I feel woefully uninformed, but I hope I'm able to speak my piece today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, too. That will conclude our in-person speakers. And we will move to the virtual speakers. Naveen, how many virtual speakers do we have?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have nine speakers.
Nine speakers, okay. At this time, we will close, we have one more in person, so we'll take the last in-person, then we'll move to the nine virtual speakers. At this time, we will close the additional sign-up for the virtual speakers. So please call our last.
Last speaker is Milfe Ramos.
Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concern. My name is Milfe Ramos, and I live in American Canyon. As a social worker and a clinician for 26 years, I've seen this happen, I work in San Francisco. I've seen this happen, I work in San Francisco, so homelessness is a big problem. And a lot of times when we have community meetings or council meetings like this, it's almost like it's a done deal already. However, I want to raise some important issues that I think, you know, everybody needs to know. I'm concerned for the homeless people or clinical homeless individuals that you're going to place in that building. I think this is a setup for failure for them. They're being thrown out and away from places or services or clinics or job opportunities that they should be, that should be available for them. It's like, I mean, Vallejo is huge. I used to live in Vallejo. There's so many vacant places where you can place them. They need housing. Yes, I am for that. But more than that, also, they need the support. They need outpatient clinic, psychiatric clinic treatment. They need vocational rehabilitation programs. They need access to transportation. But instead, you're putting them close or steps away from the marijuana mecca of Vallejo. And second is for individuals who are sex offenders. They cannot be near a park. So I think, you know, I don't know, you know, this will create a big problem. When you guys are not here anymore as city officials, who's going to solve their problem? This is a permanent thing that I hope you would really consider and think, you know, much deeper. And this is great, you know, thirteen million is a lot of money. That's great. We're lucky. Thank you for bringing that to Vallejo. We need that. But please consider the other factors also for the residents that you want to put into that space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to our virtual speakers. Naveed, would you call the first three?
Melissa Swift, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Mayor and Council. Mayor and Council, I want to start by saying that housing is a human right, and permanent supportive housing initiatives are critical to provide shelter and services to our unhoused neighbors. Unfortunately, there are serious concerns regarding the Broadway project brought before you tonight by City Manager Mike Malone and Assistant City Manager Gillian Hayes. The following issues need to be addressed directly by Malone and Hayes. According to the information provided in the staff report, the actual Home Key award from the state is for eleven point five million, with an additional six hundred thousand given if the completed project is fully occupied. Yet the city's own cost estimate provided by the contractor in the March staff report stated that the construction costs would be more than sixteen million, which still seems incredibly low considering current construction costs, and that the similar seventy-five-unit Sacramento Street project cost nearly fifty million dollars and took five years to complete. Neither Malone or Hayes have stated where the money will come from to fund this multimillion-dollar gap beyond the wishful thinking that the county will allocate ARPA money. City Manager Mike Malone also states in the staff report that there will be an additional one point seven million dollars in annual operation costs to provide services to the tenants, yet there is no detail as to how these costs will be covered beyond a small grant that will run out within months. Keep in mind that the units for this project are tiny and won't allow for families, as they will only be a maximum of three hundred square feet each. For reference, an average prison cell is about a hundred and ten square feet. The city stated that the project will be completed by December. This is unbelievable considering that the Sacramento Street project took five years to complete. The city's Home Key application stated that Malone and Hayes had done community outreach for the project, yet none of the surrounding community members, residents, businesses, or property owners were contacted about this project. As you heard tonight and seen on social media, even the mayor and city council of American Canyon are convening a special meeting to address the serious flaws with this proposed project. Finally, I want to call to your attention to the fact that the parcel of land that is being purchased by the city for this project is currently owned by Richard and Emily Fisher, who ran Councilmember Hakeem Brown's mayoral campaign. Brown has refused to acknowledge the serious conflict of interest and recuse himself from voting on this project. City Attorney Neve, why are you not taking action on this clear ethical and legal violation? Mayor and Council, I implore you to ask the questions of Malone and Hayes and demand a full accounting before moving forward with this initiative to avoid another disaster like the Navigation Center that is years behind schedule and has millions of dollars in missing funds. Demand accountability and action from Malone and Hayes. The lives of our unhoused neighbors depend on it.
Thank you, Melissa. Naveed, would you call our next speaker, please?
Steve Spencer, go ahead, please.
My council members, I just want to tell you that we're not, you're not voting today on whether to accept twelve million dollars from the state. You're voting today as whether to take full responsibility for a project, whether it's completed or not, within the timeframes required. You, the city of Vallejo, will be left holding the bag if any number of things that are unpredictable in a development project like this were to occur. The city has to complete this project, whether or not it can be done for the twelve million dollar project and/or the anticipated city contribution. There's going to be future obligations for the next fifty-five years that the city of Vallejo is going to be responsible for. City of Vallejo already has more Section Eight housing than any of the other cities within the city of, within the county of Solano, by far. Vallejo is not behind on providing Section Eight housing. It's way ahead in providing Section Eight housing. And to put another Section Eight housing project at the North Gate entrance to the city of Vallejo that's this dense is just, you know, incomprehensible to me. I would also like to point out that a similar project is being challenged in Larkspur, challenged in terms of litigation. Perman and Perman, Brown and Wax have a petition for writ of mandate to enjoin that project because of SEQA and NEPA. They're considering a NEPA action as well. Any kind of a delay like that puts this project squarely in the lap of the city of Vallejo. And I wouldn't be interested, as a member of the council for the city of Vallejo, I would not be interested in risking that outcome. So I would suggest that we delay this thing and get some real answers. Furthermore, it's obvious that the people in the area were not notified. We have a project in the area. We were not notified either. So it's obvious that there's been misstatements of fact and been misrepresentations by the city's own staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. We'll move on to our third speaker, please.
Ron Wasslon, go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm a commercial developer, owner, investor here locally, and have built a number of projects from ground up and understand the complexities of that. My concern is, you know, that with all this experience I have with new construction, that I don't think it's been taken into account the amount of extraordinary risks there are associated with new construction. Almost all the Home Key projects are repurposed buildings for this very reason. Things can go very wrong, and they can go wrong quickly. And I'm thinking that the city of Vallejo is assuming all that liability with regards to any kinds of issues, litigation, liability, construction supply delays, any of the many magnitude of issues that could come up as a result of new construction. I, you know, a project of this type would take two or three years to develop in any normal circumstances, and you guys are proposing to do it in eight months. I guess the first thing that comes up to me is what corners are being cut? What liability is being assumed? I don't see any kind of evaluation on these issues. I look at firm foundation, and they don't have any development experience on a project this scale. It looks like they've done a few projects over the last couple of years that they've been in business actually doing projects, but they've all been repurposing projects or putting modulars down on the ground, not four-story construction, interconnecting module, container odd units, all the site work that's involved with that, the infrastructure. I think there's a lot of risk associated with all that that's not being identified. Has there been a Phase One done for the project? You know, do we even know where there's contaminations there that the city's assuming by taking ownership? All of this seems to be skipped over. My biggest concern is this is a prevailing wage job, and I'm sure Factory OS has some experience with that, but the containers that they buy, are they, were they built with prevailing wage? Is all of this done by prevailing wage? And are we meeting that criteria? That's another liability and risk associated with this. You know, Shelter Inc. has the experience of managing properties in Contra Costa County, but very limited experience. They've only been three years in Solano County, and they took over Mission Solano's operation, hired their whole staff and management, that drove Mission Solano into bankruptcy. So I'm not particularly excited and enamored with the idea that Shelter Inc. is going to be taking care of this. Bottom line is, this is too risky. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. We'll move on to our fourth speaker, please. Naveed.
Ann Carr, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. Just a sound check. Can you hear me? Please confirm.
Yes.
Thanks so much. Okay, thank you for the opportunity here to speak tonight. I do want to say before I make my other comments that I am really thrilled about Factory OS in general, and I'm proud as a Vallejoan. And I think we also need to have prudent steps about how we approach these projects. Number one, I agree with Melissa Swift. I have concerns about the fact that the parcel was owned by former donors and major operators for the Hakeem campaign and the apparent conflict of interest. Number two, in the January meeting about this, there was a property owner from next door to this parcel who was developing, who had planned to develop market-rate apartments. I'm wondering if that owner was notified properly, and have they continued on their plans to develop market-rate apartments? Or are we losing the opportunity for market-rate apartments and in fact, trading off market-rate for homeless support, which I think would be a mistake? As another speaker has mentioned, we actually already have an abundance of Section Eight subsidized housing in Vallejo, more so than anywhere else. Number three, I'm concerned about creating a large housing project, and I'm wondering how this is different from the housing projects that have basically led to the development of vouchers to begin with because the Department of Housing and Urban Development found out that concentrating all of the lowest-income people in one location is a recipe for failure. So, and part two of that question is, where will the money for the services needed come from once the original grants run out? Finally, I think that we need to know, we need to have feedback to our legislative partners at the county, state, and federal, that we need other funding mechanisms for things that are less expensive than something like an apartment building. Right now, we're looking at three hundred and forty thousand dollars per unit. Can you imagine how many tough sheds we could buy for that, and how many people could be at least under a roof with a locking door? Also, I'm wondering what the rules are, and are there any disqualifying activities for the residents in this location? We know that it's a troubled population, and there's no rules around sobriety for being in the apartment. So I'm wondering, I would like to hear, and I hope the council asks for the shelter provider or shelter managers to say what the rules are that would disqualify someone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. We'll move on to our sixth speaker, or fifth speaker, please.
Randy Dawson, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Randy Dawson. I just wanted to make sure you're hearing me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I wanted to first reach out and make sure that you guys got my letter. I sent every council member and a mayor a five-page letter with background support for every point that I was trying to make. If you did get that, please read through it. I won't go through that in detail. Second is, this, the timing of a project is crucial, and this one's being forced through every single time. There's no time to even talk about it. The January twenty-fifth, the meeting was, hey, don't worry about this. We're just asking for funds. We're not going to do, you know, we don't have any guarantee. Council will see it again. This meeting is, oh, we got to get these funds right away, or else we lose them. My understanding, I spent about ten hours going through the sources and uses and the Home Key application, that the four hundred and seventy thousand dollar bonus that they get for this project isn't really something that they're counting on to complete the project. So, and the reality is, if they're not even going to start breaking ground till August first, then there's no way that they're going to complete this. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is going through the numbers. There is about a million, excuse me, somewhere around two million dollars in impact fees that a forty-eight-unit project should be charging based on what all the city shows in their fee schedule, but yet they're only showing about four hundred and seventy-four thousand in impact, and then another hundred and twenty-one thousand, which leaves a million five short of impact fees that should be charged for a project like this. Other thing I want to bring up is the parking. The goal in the Home Key was to have at least fifty percent of the people there to have employment either more or new. They're going to need cars. You got to get access to those jobs. This is way under parked. They need to improve the streets so that they can handle the parking, not overcrowded. One huge thing is also the density. This is almost a hundred units per acre. And as the applicant stated, the maximum that zoning allows is fifty, and this is almost a hundred units. Please, council members, remember, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And there are so many things that really need to be looked into, and if you don't look into it, the city accepts this responsibility and liability when they approve this project tonight, not down the road, but tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our sixth speaker, please. Naveed.
Jamila Hanif, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Council. I'm just sitting here telling myself intellect over emotions, you know, but I can't help but to really get emotional listening to the comments. Who cares who the parcel belongs to, who owns it? Thank you, the city fishers, for allowing their property to be used for such a great opportunity to house the house, who we just had, we did it in December, it's about December, when the whole village was, was thrown out. You know, you have people here in the community that are trying to make change, but we always come to the council, and everything is getting shot. Always an option.
Did we lose her?
Yeah, looks like she dropped off, Mr. Mayor. I can go ahead and call the next person.
Okay, well, we'll note she has two minutes left if she reestablishes contact. We'll move on to our seventh speaker, please.
Yeah, Daniel, go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Daniel Satake, and I'm a resident of American Canyon. My biggest concern about this project is the location. Based on the tenant requirement of your project application, it requires that tenants must suffer from a physical or mental disability as diagnosed by a doctor. I don't know the severity of mental disability that would meet this criteria, and I realize that mental illness can range greatly, but this location is adjacent to a children's playground and our city's middle school and high school bus stop. The bus stop is across the street and less than one hundred feet from the property. I worry greatly about unattended children in the morning and afternoon. These residents, in some cases, two people, will occupy a three hundred square foot unit. Residents will want to go outside for fresh air, sunshine, and more space. Residents with a mental disability could endanger children at the playground or unattended children at the bus stop. I want to find a solution for homelessness, but this project will not set up the unhoused for success. If residents with a mental disability linger around the playground or park, and others feel uncomfortable, their instinct may be to call the police. And I worry about interactions between police and the mentally ill. We've seen it across the nation. I ask you to take more time to consider the implications of this project. This is a worthwhile project that needs more time to develop. This is a worthwhile project that needs more time to develop. There are other locations in the city of Vallejo that will provide for greater success for these vulnerable citizens. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our eighth speaker, please, Naveed.
Jamila Hanif, go ahead, please.
Oh, I forgot where I left the stuff at. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I just want to thank the city manager, Gilia Hayes, for going for this grant and it's great that we were awarded this and it should be celebrated. We have more people here speaking from American Canyon telling us what it is that we need to do here in Vallejo. And, um, I mean, we, we need to get rid of the homelessness. So it's, you know, uh, onsite supportive services, um, will be client-centered, scripts-based and trauma-informed to help participants with goal-setting, life skills, financial literacy, budget and needs assessment and linkages to benefits and community resources. Um, this is great. Um, we need to move this thing forward. Uh, we was just here in December and, you know, whole village was shut down and keep, you know, running into these different obstacles, but the homeless situation is going to continue to happen unless we just do something about it. So, I mean, we really need to, um, I really hope y'all make the decision, we really just push this forward and keep waiting. Like, why do we continue to stall on things? So, um, I just hope that you guys adopt this resolution and I hope also, um, I think it would be good to allow, because I heard, man, I heard honest drugs, prostitution. People don't know these people's situations. I hope Mark Lampkin is listening in, like somebody listening in that could really go out and give these people stories, collect their stories and know what people are going through. I'm housing a woman right now who is a single mother with a four-year-old son because I couldn't stand to know that this child was in a, just even in a shelter, living in a tent. So if community input could be on, can be allowed with the policies to make sure that things are monitored, I, I recommend that, but let's move this forward, you guys. We need to move this forward.
Thank you. We'll move on to our ninth and final speaker, I believe.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we did have one extra person raise their hand after this. Chris, go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, this is the wrong project in that location. This is our north-south corridor to coming in and out of Vallejo. As you travel north through American Canyon, the sign says, "Welcome to the gateway of Napa Valley." And as you head into Napa Valley, into the city limits of Napa, you see that wonderful statue of the Minter turning the press on the grape in the barrel. As you head south back into Vallejo, you cross the mini-drive and the first thing that you're met with is the dialysis center. I don't know if it's open yet, but apparently Vallejo is the dialysis center of the world because we have two of them. To add to this, a homeless shelter four stories high seems silly. It just doesn't make sense to advertise us as both the Mecca for homeless shelters, which is much needed and there are many blighted urban areas in Vallejo which can be well repurposed for this use. And everyone agrees that we need to do something about the homeless situation in Vallejo. But I don't think putting it into our entrance to our city is the best, brightest use for the money that you're trying to go after. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Placer, one more last virtual speaker, Naveed.
Yes, one in-person speaker, last person, Janine.
Naveed, did we have one more virtual speaker?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, we had two additional people who raised their hands.
Okay, so we're going to close the virtual speakers with the next two and then we'll go to the, uh, go to the in-person one. Okay, so let's call the next two speakers.
Yeah, phone number ending in 433, go ahead, please.
Uh, phone number ending in 433, are you there?
Yep, yeah, they're unmuting themselves. Go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is Angelo Garcia. I'm, I'm located in American Canyon. I just figure out that, um, I just found out about this. I was wondering how come we're not included in our Napa County? We're not even informed, but I didn't get any mail regarding the disactivities. And it looks like the parcel is already divided into our county. I'm just so curious about it and of course, that's what the other gentleman said, it concerns a lot of things. Um, I, I think this needs more time. That's just my opinion. I mean, it's actually, I'm like, what, three houses away from that, that, um, you guys are going to be building upon and then I, I don't really, uh, I really disagree about this and it needs more planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Naveed.
Yeah, Jackie Von Bueno, go ahead, please. Jackie, go ahead, please.
Jackie, are you there? Doesn't appear to be.
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to ask you to say that...
Jackie, we're unable to hear you.
Of course. Okay, let me go to my computer. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor and council members. I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I would just like to, um, add on that I think it's vital that every single one of you sitting there listen to the voices of the people. We are the people that elected you to make the decisions for us. Would you want this in your backyard? As a registered behavioral therapist in the state of California and also as a mandated reporter, I do not think that you have got this through far enough to make a decision. There's children, there's parks, so many different factors. Please, listen to the voices of the people and thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last virtual speaker?
Yeah, this concludes all the virtual speakers.
Okay, and, uh, vice versa, we have two more in-person speakers. So with council's indulgence, we will take them. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Janine, Natty and Eric Hughes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janine and, um, I live very close to this, this, um, project, this, to be determined. And, um, actually, um, I also live where the backyard has no, um, or it looks out onto Broadway and there's more homeless going on to that area, right? Like within less than 100 feet to the residents. So, and I look around, every time I drive around Vallejo, I see majority of encampments that are, um, like near open spaces and those open spaces are actually much larger, some of the encampments are in areas that are much larger than the, you know, um, the proposed place of the border and near the dog park and near the, the park and other residents. Um, I'm afraid it's going to bring more homeless to this area and there, and will this actually, 48 units, will that cover all the homeless in Vallejo? Will, I mean, and how can you really determine? I've worked eight years with incarcerated mental health, um, incarcerated mental health and then two years with general population. They're very unpredictable. They really need a lot of, um, support and treatment teams. They need interdisciplinary treatment teams. They need to be seen by psychologists. So how can you really determine what their addiction is? If it's drugs, sex, alcohol, excuse me, um, or if it's severe mental health? I mean, you know, it's easy to lie in the beginning, so they need extensive, um, they need extensive background checks, but in a way where you can really speak to like, what, a psychologist, a psychiatrist, social worker, rehabilitation specialist therapist. But in the end, um, again, they, and being at, working at a place where they are incarcerated, where they are in just a cubicle unit or small cell, they, they want to get out. They'd leave. So if they're in a place like this and they're in that kind of area, residential kid park, dog park, and they leave, and what are they going to look for? They're already going around my neighborhood, asking my little brother when he comes to visit me, so he's saying that someone's asking him for a bottle of whiskey. And then I have another one who has, um, another neighbor and there's someone sleeping on his front porch during the day and then he's asked, he's ringing my doorbell, asking for food and money. I mean, it's, it's already there, but it's, what if it brings, you know, it brings more? And then they're starting fires in that dry grass area in the middle of summer, I mean, in the beginning of summer. And then what, how worse is it going to be? And that, that area, because it starts to go up in the hill, it's very windy. We're constantly having to call the fire department already and we already had lost, like, uh, the fire department is...
Time.
Thank you, thank you very much. And our next speaker?
Eric Hughes.
Hi, how are you? I'm not much of a public speaker, so just bear with my nervousness here. When I first came in today, I only heard about this project about four days ago myself. Sitting in here, watching the screen as these people were putting up their little display there, I actually thought this is going to be a long night. We're talking about a different place first. I mean, sweeping views, majestic, open areas, all that stuff. I finally realized, wait a minute, they're talking about this location? All I can tell you is my daughter is, uh, law school. She's doing an internship that she just started with the, uh, Federal Public Defender's Office where they encouraged her to go to the scene of even misdemeanors. They said, "We have the funds, go to those scenes to see, because that way you get better feel for the client that you're representing, what they're describing." I would ask each of, every one of you, go to that location. Don't just sit here behind your desk thinking, okay, it's small, whatever. Go look at it. Go look at it yourself and you will see what everybody here that's coming to talk about, you can't put a four-story building there, that's crazy, okay? There's no parking on the street at all. There's not even a sidewalk half of that street, you know? You, you're going to have the dialysis, there's across the street that's still yet to be open, there's going to be so much traffic coming in and out of there. Now you've got 48 people or more that are going to be right there with a new apartment that just opened up and those people already have trouble getting out of their little parking lot. You have a, a park with kids that are right butt up against this property. I mean, this is not open, sweeping views like what this little, uh, display that they, they showed everybody. This is, I mean, it's crazy. It's the wrong place. I am not, uh, one of those people there, not in my backyard. I really, really believe we have to address homelessness and I'm proud to be a Bay Areaan, a Californian that has compassion for homeless people and people that need assistance. But you gotta use wisely. You're going to spend all this money for a place that just isn't going to work. You've got the old Kmart, you've got so many places that are open areas that you could actually do some good things with. Figure out a better place, that's all there is to it. That's true, I don't even need to use my whole three minutes. I'm just saying, go look, look for yourself before you really finalize this thing because, my God, it's just way too small for what they're proposing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will complete the public speaker's portion of this hearing and will return it to the hands of the council. There were a number of concerns expressed by the public. Did staff wish to respond to those?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to address some of those and we may ask our project team if you would like some more specifics. Just wanted to clarify that the Housing and Community Development State Department, their funding notice of availability of funds is what is, is mandating streamlining of this process and the eight-month timeline. It's also has mandates regarding the environmental review and the fact that there is no entitlement process because of the need for housing, the entitlement discretionary review process is waived in this funding law. So it's not something that the city's mandating, it's something the state's mandating because of the need for housing. At this time, we are only asking that the council accept the grant award and I just want to clarify and amend the budget to accept the grant award. I just want to clarify, we will be back with, um, development and construction agreements. We will be back with, um, any additional environmental review that needs to take place. And, um, some of the speakers brought up liability issues and construction issues and those will all be dealt with in, um, agreements, um, through our attorney's office and we will bring those back to city council for their review. Also wanted to verify there is an onsite manager unit, so someone will be living there 24 hours a day. Um, and a few people stated that there was only two caseworkers and I believe there's three for the 48 units. The zoning code, as Natalie outlined in the beginning, and we do have our Planning and Development Services Director if the council needs additional information, but the zoning, the, the project complies with the zoning code and the general plan using a density bonus. So they will, um, be looking at site plan requirements, they will be, you know, looking at that density currently allows 50 units per acre plus an increase of 20% with the state density bonus law. So this project is in compliance with those, um, requirements. Let's see, again, the budget was part of the application that came before the council and the public was noticed in, uh, January and we are happy to share that information. Also, I know that Firm Foundation has those budget numbers at their fingertips if the council would like to revisit those. But the funding includes, um, pairing with, um, our project-based voucher program, our home ARP funding, our city's ARPA and this Home Key funding to make this project work. And it's a bit complex, but because the project, um, will be, um, trying to apply for our project-based vouchers, the payment for those rentals will be what sustains the services for the program, um, clients. So it will not be dipping into the general fund of the city of Vallejo at all now or in the future. Again, Firm Foundation has much experience with modular buildings and many, uh, projects throughout the state of California. I think they can speak to that, but if you've seen their website, you can see that they have projects in Vacaville, Fairfield and, um, other Southern California cities as well. So they have, um, tried and true experience with programs and projects just like this one. Let's see. If there's any other concerns that the council has or questions, um, I'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the applicants or, I don't want at the presentation table? Any further comments from any of you?
Uh, we'll wait for additional questions from council.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go to our council then. While everybody's getting their councils, questions ready, let me ask Mr. Reisner on the Brown Act. The 200, 300-foot notification requirement, does that require notification beyond our city limits or beyond the county line or do we, or do we not have to go across the county line or the city limits?
Mayor, for tonight's item that's on the agenda, it doesn't require that type of notice at all. What's on the agenda tonight is to authorize the city manager to accept the grant award and sign the grant agreement and also to provide notice of amending the budget. That's all that's on the agenda. The project is not on the agenda this evening.
So when, when the development agreement and the project itself comes before this council, the notice would be given to people in American Canyon as well?
The, actually, I, and maybe Veronica can answer this, I do not know if we need to go across the county boundary to notice people in, in American Canyon, it's something that I'd have, I would have to check and see myself.
So...
Somebody speaking?
That's Veronica.
Oh, okay.
I'll defer to Veronica.
Ms. Nav. Is our city attorney on?
We've lost her.
On the call? If not...
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I, I muted myself. My apologies.
Go ahead.
So, in the present, in the present case, the project as proposed complies with the zoning code, complies with the general plan with the application of a density bonus and therefore is subject to a discretionary action, subject to a public hearing. So there isn't a notice to be provided to residents of Vallejo or residents of American Canyon or anywhere else. It isn't a project subject to a public hearing. Now that does not mean that as we move forward with the agreements, et cetera, any of our CECL or NEPR compliance that may or may not be necessary at those stages of entering into those agreements or any other approvals that those individuals would not receive notice of the, of the, for lack of a better meaning, where these actions would take place. But a public hearing notice for a non-discretionary project that only needs a building permit does not occur.
Okay, thank you very much for that information and, um, this specific application for $12,91,866, is this site-specific or could that money be used to any other parcel other than this one?
It is a site-specific application and award.
It is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I, I'll reserve my further questions, so we'll go to council members at this time. Vice, vice mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to all the speakers who have come here. Welcome to folks from American Canyon. We don't usually see you, but we appreciate you voicing out your opinions, and thank you. Thank you to those that are from Vallejo who actually came to this meeting. I have a couple of questions. After, if we approve this project and the project moves forward with construction, who actually ends up owning the building? Because I know Shelter Inc. will be providing the case management services. So that's one. And then whoever owns the building, and I'm assuming that they would be assuming liability for anything that happens in that, you know, if there's any lawsuits or anything that's of a legal nature. And maybe you can answer that question first, and then I can ask Shelter Inc. follow-up question.
I can answer that question, Vice Mayor. So, as directed by the council, we are working on a purchase and sale agreement for the city to actually own the project. And as we move forward with those agreements for development and construction of the project, and for contracting services through Shelter Inc. for the project, we will address, you know, insurance, liability, and all of those items through those agreements, which will come back to the City Council for approval.
I see. So initially, the city will be owning the facility?
Yes.
For now, and Shelter Inc. is being given the contract to provide services. Okay, that's good. Question for Shelter Inc. So Shelter Inc., I'm very familiar with your work, perhaps for the benefit of the audience that asks questions about your credibility and your reputation as a premier provider of services to our homeless population, including mental health services, substance abuse services, folks that have very, had very been challenged in their lives. So can you please address and elaborate on that?
We have John Ekstrom here, who can speak to the full role of Shelter Inc. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm John Ekstrom, CEO of Shelter Inc. So yes, we've been operating homeless services and housing services for over 35 years. We branched out into Solano County as well as Sacramento County several years ago, providing more services, and in the near future, we'll be in Marin County as well. We own quite a few properties in Contra Costa that operate as permanent supportive housing, and we master lease several hundred more for permanent supportive housing. So we appreciate the concerns that the audience has presented tonight, but we're here to assure them that the models that we use, in terms of permanent supportive housing, the way we staff it, is something that we've had great success with.
Okay, good, thank you. And I know that you partner with a county, Solano County, and...
Correct.
Okay, if you can just elaborate on that.
Sure. We've been providing rapid rehousing services with the county for four years now, four and a half years. We took over as the operator of the former Mission Solano site a little over three years ago. We've been very successful there in terms of housing the chronically homeless. We've been able to successfully house people. Our positive housing rate varies each year between about 35 and over 60%. And our model is such that it's an integrated model, and we provide pretty much all the wraparound services that everybody needs. It's all individually based in terms of their programs, and we partner with literally dozens of other agencies within the county, provide services that maybe we don't have in-house.
Okay, thank you. And you're familiar with the Housing First model, and that is the evidence-based program in order to address and treat issues of mental health, substance abuse, and other issues. I firmly believe, because that's an evidence-based model, that you provide housing first to these folks that need housing. As you said, 90% of these folks would want to be in a, you know, even if it's a studio, they would appreciate it very much. And once they're stable, then they would be very receptive, evidence-based, based on research, that they will seek treatment. And treatment is your road to being a productive citizen. So for those of you, I'm a mental health professional, so I'm very familiar working with this population. And I take offense to those folks who stereotype homeless people as mentally ill and criminals. That is just not true. And I take it offense, because these people need help, and we, as a community, and we as human beings, need to be compassionate. Everyone deserves a chance. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll speak a little bit more. All of our programs use the Housing First model, which is in part why we have all the wraparound services, depending on where that person is in their stage of their life. People should know that a lot of the folks we see, they were your neighbors, right? People fall on hard times. Sometimes people don't make the right choices. But our success rate, I think, tells a story about the way we provide our services and the success rate, and how we work with the community.
Thank you. Then just one final comment. You know, folks that are complaining about homeless people in the streets, behind their backyards, and encampments, I'd rather have them in a shelter, in a permanent supportive housing, rather than being out in the streets and bothering and begging and knocking at doors. This is an opportunity for us, for the city of Vallejo, and I care about my city and the citizens that live here. We need to, like I said, be compassionate and do something about the problem, and not just kick them, not to kick the can again, and let someone else take care of it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Laura Diaz?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Verdera-Liga. I echo your comments. I want it to be on record that we're talking about human beings here, okay? And that's important, because these are people, nobody mentioned that these are folks that are veterans, you know, the folks that go overseas and defend our liberty, that are now on the streets. Some of them are veterans. Some of them are people with physical disabilities that any of us could have at any given moment. We're blessed that we were able to walk in here, come in here, and express our voice. Again, this goes back to the veterans who fought for our liberty to be able to come here and voice our opinions. These are survivors of domestic violence, people that are running away from aggressors with children. These are women that are living with a child in a vehicle, in a van. Now, these are also COVID-affected individuals. We've just gone through a stage of illness that has affected our nation and the world. So a lot of people have lost their jobs. And I mention this because I know this very well. You see, I retired after a 28-year career, having worked in Contra Costa County, Solano County, and Napa County, in various positions. The last one, when I retired in 2017, I was an employment case manager. What that is, I was the person that would work with individuals that had issues to become self-sufficient. I would work with them and make sure that they were able to go out into the world and provide for their child, children themselves, what everybody wants. Now, contrary to what a lot of people think, that the people applying for aid are drug-addicted individuals, immigrants, people that just are losers, that don't have a life, that are just out there mooching off the system that we work and contribute to, I can tell you that I had nurses sitting across the desk from me that had lost their jobs due to layoffs. I had carpenters, plumbers during the winter season that were not working because when it rains, they don't work. And sometimes their unemployment, which by the way, back then was $460 a week, does not pay a $25 or a $3,000 mortgage that we pay here in the Bay Area. So I want to clarify that, because regardless of how we vote, you know, we heard a lot of comments today that people are entitled to have, in the same manner that I'm entitled to have my own comments. So I wanted to set the record straight of my feelings. I'm not imposing anything, but these are facts. 28 years of working, having 60 to 80 families in my caseload, you know, we heard people saying that they're going to have one case manager for 48 people. I had 40, 60 to 80 families. So, not people, just families with children and in-laws, you know? A lot of people apply for aid and they have extended families. I'm sure many of you know that. Okay? Also, when we're asked why that location, the location is probably not the perfect location. I can agree with you guys on that. But is there a perfect location? There isn't. Now, what Vallejo is trying to do, and I'm one of the newest council members here, I've been on the council for a year and a half, so I'm still trying to get the gist of how the heck we ended up in the situation that we're in. How do we have so many homeless out there? You know, Mare Island closed a while back, and we still haven't been able to recoup. I'm happy that the American Canyon in 20 years has developed so much. Remember, though, that a lot of the people in Vallejo go to American Canyon and purchase goods at the Walmart, at the Safeway, at different places. So we contribute to that economy. It's a fact. So when we're asked about the location, you know, we have right now a building that's being built over on Sacramento Street, close to the Christian Help Center. We don't want to just have everybody in this situation in one location, because that's not fair. You can't just figure out a location in Vallejo and say, let's just go dump everybody there. Let's just put everybody there, because who cares about their kids that have to walk to school through gang-infested areas and prostitution on Sonoma Boulevard? You know, for those of us that care about kids, yeah, that's what we have every day. As far as looking at the location, I've been out there a couple of times. In fact, I went out there this morning, and I've got the pictures on my phone if anybody wants to see them. I took pictures there. So what I'm trying to say is that there's no perfect location. We're evaluating this. You know, we don't want to let $12 million go when we've had one, seven were the ones that were awarded. You know, people say that our city is a dumpster. People say that our city is just, doesn't get their act together, yet when we get $12 million, people start to complain on how we're going to use them. I'm sorry. When I was elected, I was elected to represent the people of Vallejo. Those are the people that elected me, keeping in mind that I want to be a good neighbor to American Canyon in the same way that I'm sure American Canyon wants to be with me, with us. Some of the questions I have for staff are the application process. What is going to be the application process for these folks? How are they going to be vetted? Who is going to be picked, and how long can they stay there?
So I'll take that one. So everyone will be evaluated according to qualifications for the building and income, mental disability, physical disability. What their disability is, is not allowed to be told to me, so I have to prepare for any type of disability. That's a fair housing, that's a fair housing law, to where I cannot choose you by your disability. If I do that, liability is huge, because I'm set up for a lawsuit. Somebody's going to sue me for that. They're going to sue the property, they're going to sue the city of Vallejo. So they must qualify with a disability. I must not know what that is. That is where the coordinated entry system for Solano County comes into play. So we give them the parameters of what you're required to do to come in. For Housing First, which is a law in the state of California, and not just a wonderful science-backed process, we lower the barrier of housing to a point to allow people to move in to find that baseline. Without that baseline, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, if you learn psychology, we love it, will tell you, you cannot build your life without a solid foundation, and a solid foundation is a solid place to live. Therefore, your barrier's lowered, you move in, and that's where case management comes in to work together to build them up. So, the simple answer is mental and physical disability. They have to make 30%, 30%, right? 30% below the area median income, they qualify to move in. Now, keep in mind, project-based vouchers are put in place for this project, there is background checks done by the housing authority according to HUD guidelines. One of those background checks is sex offender.
Okay.
So would not be a sex offender moving in because the housing authority does the background check.
And that was my next question, because that is important.
Yes.
Security guard, are we going to have any security system on that premises? Security cameras, security guards?
There will be security cameras. There will not start out with security guards. We will have a limited accessibility, and what that means is, if you were to visit me in that property, you cannot call me on the phone, and I cannot let you in through my phone. I must come to the door and let you in. Therefore, if somebody's mad at you to come there and visit, and they call your neighbor, and your neighbor says, oh, well, whatever, and lets them in, it violates security. So when you design and build one of these properties, you do that with security in mind. Cameras, limited access, and then you evaluate from there as to whether the need is actually there for security.
Okay. The parking was brought up, and I think I heard from one of you guys that most of the people that will live there will not have vehicles, therefore, we do not need 48 parking spaces, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the parking...
That's correct. Statistically speaking...
Exactly.
The number of years I've been in permanent supportive housing and chronically homeless housing, the number of cars would maybe be a .02% to the number housed.
All right. The rooftop, I'm not particularly thrilled about having a rooftop on a four-story building when you have a residential area and you have other areas there, so I'd be more inclined, and that's something that's going to be discussed later, I understand, but I'm not really caring for that, for the folks from...
If I, I'm sorry, if you look at the design, the rooftop is not on the top of the fourth floor.
Pardon me?
It is not on top of the fourth floor.
It's on, where's it at?
It's on the top of the community room.
Okay.
So it's on the top of the first floor.
And there's a need for a rooftop?
It's a wonderful ability to activate a space.
Okay.
One of the, one of the best things for permanent supportive housing is to create an ability to have a community in the building.
Right. I'm just, I'm just, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm listening to the folks that are sitting here and some of the things that they mentioned, that they wouldn't feel comfortable having a rooftop close to their homes and having people be able to see over. So I look at both sides, and that's something that I need to ask. So also, the costs for Factory OS, I'm going to be very, very frank. I think that at this point, since you guys are building the Sacramento building, and if we decide to move forward with this, I think that, you know, the city of Vallejo needs to have some sort of reduction in the amount. That's something that can be discussed later, but I'd like it to go on record of how I feel and the things that I think. So I would like to see a reduction in that sense. I'm almost done, Mayor, I know that...
Just to clarify...
Yes.
Factory OS is a portion of the build and of the total contract value for the project. We are not the builder, we are a subcontractor to the general contractor that will build the project.
Okay.
This project will control costs because it is utilizing Factory OS catalog units. So on other projects where designers raise fees, take a long time to design the building, then costs go up, we internally have developed 22 different catalog of units that we've already built and permitted to keep costs low. We also then have built them in our factories so we can build them more efficiently, and that's how we're able to lower the cost of housing.
Okay. And I'll discuss this further with you, but I wanted to put that out there. A gentleman mentioned that these containers are brought in and just put on there, and I'm glad that you...
Just one more clarification, they're not containers.
That's exactly where I was going with this.
Thank you.
So I'm glad that you mentioned that, and I want to clarify that for the gentleman that mentioned that. They are not containers. If you looked at the video, they are clearly being made on the island by people that live in Vallejo or live in the proximity. I think that's all I have for right now.
One more thing, the people that are making them, in terms of the prevailing wage, are all part of the Northern California Carpenter's Union.
Which is good. I believe in union, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I recognize the next speaker, allow the chair to point out that what is before us tonight is a more narrow question. We are not talking about the merits of the project itself this evening. That goes in the development agreement, which will come before us at a different time if this goes forward this evening. The only question, and a very narrow question, we are deciding tonight is whether to accept the funds and to amend the capital improvement budget. All the concerns about how the building's going to operate, what it looks like, who's going to get into it, those go into the development agreement, and those are proper questioning at that time. So that's the next round of the battle. So let's focus on just the issue before us this evening, if we may. Chair recognizes Councilmember Easter.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation, very thorough. So I, some of my questions were already asked by Councilmember Laura Diaz, so I'll try to go through my horrible writing. Is there any chance that this could go in front of the Design Review Board? That's probably not...
There are no discretionary approvals for this project, so no, the plan is not to go before the Design Review Board. If the council prefers that, we could take it maybe as a concept item and get some conceptual... feedback, but then again, that does add time to the process.
Yeah, even though they don't really have authority over it, I think that'd be a nice step, even though I like the design. And I do see that the roof, the roof has a cover, it looks like. There's a roof deck, and it's got a little cover. I'm looking at slide number nine.
There's a partial cover on the rooftop that goes towards, it's an equipment room, that's that second little, what looks like it would be a, you know, penthouse. It's actually an equipment room with the extended, kind of sun-shaded type piece. You'd have to probably go back one more slide on that. You can see right there, the white piece right there. So it's a partial over, partial over, so you have shaded portions up there as well.
And then, now that we have the slide up, because I was thinking about this, so, you know, it shows full-grown trees. Obviously, they won't grow, but I hope you're going to put a lot of effort into the landscaping because I think that's really important.
We will absolutely have a landscaping contract.
Okay.
And landscaping design, of course, we haven't got to that stage yet, but it will be very thorough, and we will think through it specifically around this type of a project to make sure it works one drought as well as, as well for the community.
Yeah, because you want to include the SEPTED. What is it, what's that acronym for? You know, designed to make a place safe, which is, sounds like you've already done that, or you're doing that.
That's correct. That's, that will be included, and that's part of a design security approach to this type of a project.
And then, so I am going to get a little bit into the question about, so you've got these separate units, but there's one entrance, right? Because I think that's what, when I look around at older projects, one of the problems I see is that there's so many different entries, and there's these open stairwells, and they're a little bit, you know, it can be, I've walked through those to camp, to campaign, and it can be very sketchy. Although, I've never had an issue, but you know, it just doesn't, it doesn't make you feel safe. So one entrance, I think what we're doing is Sacramento Street. So the outdoor smoking, so I'll just make comments about that.
So my apologies, that was part of a very rough draft that has been since eliminated from the design.
Oh, the outdoor smoking?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I do sort of, you know, people are going to want to smoke, and they can't smoke in their multi-unit housing because we just passed that. But I just, you know, like an airport lounge, they have airport lounges. I don't know if there's a place that we can have, sort of, ask people to go smoke. So it's not outside in front of the door or something?
The intention is to enforce law, of course, but second is to step away from an institutional approach. Institutional approach would say, "You are designated to smoke in that corner on that cement bench." So as long as you're not violating the law around entrance, active entrances, then we're not having a designated smoking area. So you're free to live your life as you choose.
Yeah, I guess I, so my concern with that is, I mean, we've already sort of institutionalized it because we don't allow smoking in multi-unit apartments across the city. So I just don't want to, you know, the idea behind it is just not to have the area get trashy. And I think that's really, I really hear from the neighbors here, they don't want to see, you know, they take care of their homes, they don't want to see this to be a burden and, you know, get trashy with cigarette butts all over the place. Like Casa de Vallejo, they're out, people are outside smoking all the time, there's cigarette butts up and down Sonoma Boulevard, which I walk around there a lot, so I see it.
I think we can review the design to make sure that there is an area where maybe it is more encouraged
Yeah, yeah.
Versus just, like, this is your only location, but make it available for designated for lack better words, smoking areas.
Yeah, like a nice, like, you know, outside the building that I work in during the day, there are designated places where they've got the cigarette, you know, they've got the ashtrays, they've got a bench. It's actually not bad. So, so also, I guess, going down that route, so I used to work for the AIDS Foundation. I was part of Needle Exchange, I worked at Sixon Market, I've seen it all, and I've seen the needles all over the place. And so when you have housing first, I mean, I totally under, I get it. I totally understand what it is. You can't, if you're somebody with abuse issues, you know, of substance use and abuse issues, there's no way to get clean when you're trying to find a place to sleep, you know, in an RV or under a bush, so frankly. So I do understand housing first, but I also just want to make sure that there's some kind of mechanism to make sure that the area around the property is kept clean if that stuff starts to show up. I don't know if it would or not, but just in case, so, because I, like I said, I used to work at Sixon, I used to live in the Tenderloin, so I've seen, I've seen it all. So, so again, so how are we gonna, so with the way that the intake is, how really are going to, are we going to prioritize, prioritize, and these are Vallejo residents, or people that became homeless in Vallejo?
So when you work with the coordinated entry system, you actually put parameters for a property. So it will, that system itself, which we will do an extensive, step-by-step process to set it up, will prioritize Vallejo individuals. So that will happen, and that's part of how you set up that system.
Yeah, because we have, we have plenty more than we'll even, you know, there's not enough units in that building to
No, of course not.
House the amount of people that we have that are homeless.
Of course not.
So, so somebody said that this is, there were a couple of comments about this being too large of a project for that particular area. You know, given we're more of suburban, I guess that might be true, but I bet I don't know, if you can give me some examples of other projects you've done, it sounds like we've done quite a few already. And do they have that many, the ratio of units to the amount of acreage?
So, I'm not sure if Jake wants to answer this. I can talk about the experience I have. Go ahead.
Jake, if you're still on, are you able to answer this, and then we can pass it to Shelter Inc. to finish? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm still on. I would actually defer to begin with to Shelter Inc.'s experience in operating permanent supportive housing sites. I know that along this route, that in the current trend of California density bonus law, this is becoming pretty familiar, this kind of density on a property of this size, and it's actually being advocated for in numerous different ways. On a .53-acre site, we're probably pretty close, doing a 36-unit project. I don't know the acreage off the top of my head, but we were able to design that one to be really humanizing, to fit the space, and any of the council is welcome to come tour that. We did that project for Alameda County in San Leandro. I think that our design team, especially Dallin Architecture, is well-familiar with density, is well-familiar with density bonus, and has designed this project to make the space feel as open. So I really do think it'll work well on this site. And again, is the, is the current trend in architecture, in design, and in housing. I'll defer now to Kevin's experience with properties of this, of this density.
Thanks, Jake. So when you start looking at permanent supportive housing in different communities, you of course have to take that specific community into consideration. You take this size of acreage in the city of San Francisco, which I worked for well over two years in the Tenderloin myself, this number of units is nothing to what you can put in the city of San Francisco, right? So considering the city of Vallejo and design of city of Vallejo, this is a good balance for this size of property. You can go to the technicalities of density bonus, you can go to all of that. That is certainly not my, that's not my expertise. But for the site and for the size of this, this would be, to me, the max of what you would want to do.
Through the mayor. Councilmember?
I just wanted to kind of outline what's going on as far as development trends in this area so you can visualize. So we've got the dialysis center, like, like was spoken about before, and currently in process is the La Quinta Inn and Hotel adjacent, kitty corner, I guess, from the site-ish. That is a five-story, I believe, correct? Five-story hotel. This is a four-story unit. And then, two parcels away is the building that was converted to apartments, market-rate apartments, that's three-story. So we've got three, four, five dialysis, and then some concept proposals for different, you know, restaurants and items like that, which would be one or two-story. So there's a mix in this area currently under development.
Okay, thanks.
The existing apartment, excuse me, two stories there. Thank you.
So one other question. So this is permanent supportive housing, but this sort of is a, so I think what people don't understand is those tough sheds, there are a lot of people that are living in there permanently, you know, because there's no step up for these folks, you know, they get, and living in a tough shed, given what's been going on in Oakland with the fires and whatnot, it's just not safe. These are, people just left to their own devices, there's no services down there, as I understand. So my question is, it feels like this is a way to step people up into other housing eventually, once they get sort of stabilized? Is that, is that part of sort of the idea?
So when we think about terminology in permanent supportive housing and taking homeless or chronic homeless off the streets and get them to stabilize and/or become productive members of society, which is really a big theme of what I've heard tonight, you want to understand first, just maintaining a housing and not doing anything more than that for them as being a productive member of society. So our job is not really to go in there and say, "Here's your apartment, you need to pay a little rent, housing authority will cover subsidy," and work with our services department so you can go out and do what everybody else thinks you should do. It's about, "Here's your apartment, welcome home, and when you need some help to become a little better, we're here for you." So you can get to your point.
No, I get that it's not like, you don't want to force people through, and for some people, this will be the end, that will be it.
Correct.
You know, they will never move on. I totally get that. So I have a, you know, I want to say, I have relatives, I have a good friend that's now living in a motel. She has lung disease, and she lost her job, and now she's homeless. I mean, she's not homeless because we've been doing GoFundMes to give her money to, but where is she going to go, you know? And I have a relative who has mental health issues, and he's lucky that there's a family for him, that we make sure that he's housed. But, you know, since, I mean, I think there's so many factors now that are really exacerbating homelessness. It used, I think, first of all, I mean, especially like at Sixon Market, you would see people that were seriously in need of mental health services, seriously in need, and that goes back to Reagan, you know, throwing people out, closing institutions, and there was never a real solution. And so now we see people on the streets that can't take care of themselves. So I do, I do, you know, this is just to approve or accept the money, but I do just want to strongly state that, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, right? And so to make sure that there's, I mean, I would like to see, I was actually Googling Luxper, and they have a community safety services team for people that are sort of in crisis, and that might be part of the police department, I don't know, but, you know, at some point, that's, I would like to have that as part of a discussion. And then just ways to contact the building, you know, whoever's at the building, the property manager, if there's problems. And even maybe having, you know, and maybe once this starts to go, people, they'll fear, you know, they'll see how it's run, it'll reduce their fears, but maybe even some community meetings going forward. And I just want to say, so somebody mentioned a Kmart property. So the Kmart property is owned by Walmart, and Walmart, you know, people say that the city lost Walmart. Well, the city of Vallejo did not lose Walmart. Walmart bought that property and pretended like they were going to build a Walmart, a super Walmart. And what they did is what they did, it was an anti-competitive measure. They bought that property, they still own it because they don't want Vallejo to compete against American Canyon. I'm sure American Canyon likes that, too. So we can't buy Walmart. They're not selling it. And that's probably, that's probably true of a lot of the vacant buildings and lots, you know, they're just not for sale. We just don't, even though it might look like we have property, we don't. And I want this to be, I do want this to be, you know, like I said, to work with the community and make sure that issues that come up are addressed in a way that's respectful. So, because people are concerned, you know, and I get that, too. So, but anyway, I want, thank you so much for listening.
If I can add one, if I can add one thing. One thing about Shelter Inc. is we are also very big on education. So if anybody wants to learn, they're more than free to contact us. We'll help them understand, we can, we can walk through it. Makes no difference to us.
That'd be great, that'd be great. And I just, I want to say, I know John Ekstrom from, he might not remember me, but I'm on the two-by-two, Vice Mayor Vitor Eliga is on the two-by-two, and I'm also on the tripartite advisory board, so we get to decide where the CSBG money goes, and so we often give money to Shelter Inc., and we're very happy that they've taken over from Mission Solano. They're doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Do?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you colleagues for all of your passion. Thank you for everyone that commented. I appreciate your concerns. I, a few years ago, when we were first really starting to grapple with the homeless issue, I went to San Francisco and got to tour one of their navigation centers, and in that center was exactly like what I think all of the people that spoke tonight were envisioning in their heads. It really was, you know, a situation where they were having to, they could only be in that facility for a couple of months, they're getting, you know, it was like a carousel moving them through that facility to, then they get popped out of there and hopefully get into another facility, and there were people in tents all along the street, you know, just totally get that concern. But then I also got the pleasure to tour Homeward Bound, and, oh my goodness, that place is just so lovely and so exciting to see how that permanent supportive housing model instills hope into the individuals that are living there. And having that hope is the first step to them healing and being able to become their best selves, their, reach their fullest potential at some point in time. And we have these individuals, we have hundreds of these individuals in our city right now that are not getting services, they're not getting help, they're on the streets getting nothing, and they are hurting and getting worse every day. If we don't do something, the situation is not only not going to get better, it will get worse. And so we have an opportunity right now. On the site location, Gillian, could you just share, I mean, this isn't the first site we've looked at, this is not the first step in this whole process. We've been looking for a couple of years now at so many sites. Can you just give a brief list of everything we've looked at?
Sure. So before my time overseeing housing, the housing manager at the time brought, I think, between nine to 11 locations. We're looking for some camping locations. Council reviewed and analyzed and heard input from the public, and none of those sites were acceptable at the time. We came forward with the Hope Village in December, where a church was proposing a solution at the Nazarene Church, and that wasn't appropriate. We've looked at City Hall parking lots, we've looked at some of the other properties that the city owns, some of the other properties that other nonprofits that have approached the city have owned, and so, yes, this one is by far, in my professional planning opinion, one of the best locations. It's not perfect, and I think finding the perfect spot is difficult when you live and your community is a city, it's an urban city. And it's also difficult, if you're in the county unincorporated area, to find a great spot for homeless housing. So that's kind of a mini-history in the last couple of years of all of the different sites that we've looked at. And again, we're struggling and have been struggling with navigation center sites. Luckily, we're getting much, much closer to options for that moving forward. But again, there's, each site has its own individual issues, be it, you know, onsite improvements and utilities and neighborhoods and, you know, environmental factors, and there's always a lot that we have to look at when assessing each site, and this one checks a majority of those boxes for the city.
Thank you. And then I know that the facility will have, you know, full wraparound services, mental health support, substance abuse services, you know, job training, like, all kinds of great things. What about access to healthcare and transportation?
So one of the things that we will provide is transportation assistance. The liability of buying a van and driving residents' places is just too high. So instead of doing that, also... So, instead of doing that also, that is kind of institutional, providing them the ability to take transportation, take public transportation, whether that's bus tokens, whatever, however, we find it to be best beneficial for that specific community, which this project is beautiful in allowing us to do. I could give the excitement to people that I have, but they wouldn't understand it, to why this flexibility is so important. So, even if it's Uber and sending somebody in Uber if they need to go to a doctor's appointment, we'll be able to do that. Lyft, if you prefer, whichever way. So, that type of flexibility is there with this project.
Yeah, that's great. Just, you reminded me of... Sassoon City actually has a program for, I think, through Solano Mobility, where every single resident for $2 can get Lyft anywhere in town. So, wouldn't that be lovely? Just planting some seeds. Then, there was a lot of concerns about calls for service. Can you just share, like, on other projects? Is there a high volume of calls for service? What that looks like?
Interestingly enough, the last study that... Previously, I was in San Francisco doing permanent supportive housing in the Tenderloin. And we went through about a year and a half study and then tried to get from public services in San Francisco an understanding of service calls. One of the challenges in that is understanding if the service call was from someone outside of the property, just coming to the address, or someone inside of the property coming to the address. How that relates to this project is that the concentration of people that are living the same experience as those that would live in this building is far less. So, knowing what would be the difference in service calls, it's tough to say, but it's very small.
Great, thank you. And then, have you found in these other... I mean, I know that I also toured one other, and I can't remember the name of it, but there wasn't, you know, it didn't seem to be a magnet for other homeless individuals that are not part of the program. But can you just share if that is true in your other projects?
Historically, just like I love my apartment complex I live in, and I don't want a bunch of crazy happening, that's the same thing we hear. So, this... It's not like they're mentally disabled people that move into a mental facility. These are people that have disabilities that get addressed when they move in, and they want to better their lives. It's tough to see if you don't experience it. So, generally speaking, not an issue.
Okay. And then, I know American Canyon just sent us that letter so quickly before our meeting, but did the city attorney have a chance to look at the allegations in that letter and if there is any merit to those allegations?
I did read the letter quickly before we got here, but as you said, it came in like right before the meeting. There was a Brown Act issue that they raised that we talked about when Mayor McConnell asked about it earlier. There is no Brown Act issue. The language on the agenda is exactly the action that you're taking this evening and is exactly appropriate. The other issue that they waived was a CEQA issue. This project is exempt from CEQA by statute. So, that is what I know so far, based upon a very quick reading of it.
Great, thank you. And then, in the presentation, you mentioned one thing, and you said it would become apparent why it was that, and I didn't catch why it was apparent. So, I'm going to ask, management hours from 1:00 to 5:00?
So, I probably failed on that presentation. I'm going to say I'm not usually the public presenter. I'm the operator. I go out and I make it happen, right? So, in permanent supportive housing, it is far more important to fund a robust services plan. In order to do that, with the income from this property, you want to look at your staffing cost for the management side of things. When you look at permanent supportive housing, you understand that the manager is the enforcer. Services will help them fix their life. When you don't have as much of that enforcer, then the fixer happens. So, in the funding and in operating money, really, you want to be able to fund that robust services plan. Now, there is a way to kind of cheat, not really... Probably the best thing I should say in front of the city council, but because they are a staff member of Shelter Inc., we are... They do also work in other areas for us, in other management pieces for other properties. Their office will be in that building. So, it doesn't mean they're not present. It just means they will have to work on some other things in the morning, and they're focused for that property in the evening. The second part is, the activity in the building will be more in the afternoon than it will be in the morning. So, it's actually strategically timed that way according to the activity of the property, meaning people are getting out, they're doing things. So, that's why it's there, and it's to allow us to fund a robust services plan in the property.
Great, thank you. And then, there were concerns about needles and garbage and that kind of thing.
So, we will hire a janitor who will be in the property, and their job is to keep it clean and pick it up. Now, when you refer back to needle exchange, you refer back to different experiences with permanent supportive housing. There are partnerships that you can get in place for people to actually put needle boxes throughout the property. You can provide them to the people that live in it. So, if they are using, or if they're diabetic, they're able to put their needles in a needle container, and then they get exchanged. So, again, it comes to what does that specific community need? That community may not need a needle situation. They may need it. So, in the event that they do, we know how to go out, partner to get people to buy those needle, or to bring in and trade out those needle boxes. Yeah.
Great, thank you. And then, my only other questions were in... To clarify the perceptions of the Section 8 housing that, you know, several people said that we have more than anybody else, and I don't believe that's actually accurate. And then, also, you know, obviously, 48 is not going to solve our homeless issue. And we do have, you know, areas around town, such as the location on Couch Street. And so, just if the city could share any thoughts on what we're planning on doing from that perspective.
So, I can address the Section 8 and the low-income housing projects. We have a few here in Vallejo. We have 1,000 unutilized Section 8 vouchers currently in our housing authority. So, we have 1,000 people that could be placed in housing if it was available. And then, you talked about Couch Street and addressing issues throughout the city. Someone brought up like the CVS parking lot and stuff like that. So, I'm going to check with the city attorney, but I believe Couch Street's on our neighborhood law program list. Is Couch Street on that list? Yes, so it is. So, that's being addressed. And just so that the community understands, when a property is private, like a CVS parking lot, is owned by a private property owner, it's the private property owner's responsibility to take care of that. And if they don't, then we work through our neighborhood law program, and we work with them to try and clean up and take the corrective action. When the property is owned by the city, then the city's responsibility. But the city cannot go in and make a private property owner comply. So, I just want to clarify that.
Gillian, can I just add one thing to that? There are a couple of things that we can do to get them to comply, and we've done it before. Councilmember Meesner mentioned the Walmart property. We had a huge encampment there. We were able to get them to clean that up with a lawsuit. Once you file lawsuits with some of these property owners, things happen pretty quickly. There are also nuisance laws that allow us to do some things that to encourage them, again, to clean them up or face some kind of legal liability. So, there are things that we do do with private property owners, and we're very successful at it usually.
But it's a process.
It is indeed a process. It takes time. We have to go through the code enforcement process, document all of that, and get to a point where we can actually file a nuisance lawsuit against them.
Thank you. That was all of my questions.
Councilmember Ariela, 10 minutes. That's what we all agreed to, but nobody seems... I know, but nobody seems... Remember, we all agreed to that at Gold City, but... We've been a little...
Yeah, it's been longer than 10 minutes. But anyway, I'm going to keep it short because, as Randy said, we have to stick to the agendas wording and... So, first of all, thank you for the partnership presentation. You know, I have nothing but love and love, love, love for Factory OS. You guys turn things, make it magic. So, I'm really glad that you're in partner, that Factory OS is in partner with this. Can't see anybody else, frankly, being involved. To Mr. Raider Nation out there, there you are. I actually did take a walk around the neighborhood this morning, and I spoke to a couple of folks out there. So, I took a field trip, and I saw what most of you were seeing. Well, that's just a picture. You know, it's a rendering. As a matter of fact, it is a rendering. Now, this is much different than... This is much different. This is a January rendering. So, this is... This project has evolved in it. Is this the final description, or will there be some more changes to it? And how will that affect the length of the, you know, the production time?
So, we forget Jake Metcalf is on here, and he's the developer. So, Jake?
Good evening, everyone. Still here. And I want to thank everyone for their comments as well. This is the design up to this point. We are planning on submitting our planning application this Friday, at which point the entire planning department, FIRE, will take a look at it. Public Works will take a look at it. And they're going to get their chance to be part of the design process in order to answer a bunch of the questions that were raised tonight. And so, I do not know... You know, we have to take all of those inputs in once we get the information back from planning and go back to the design process. This is the current concept design. We have some limitations, one of which is the site size in particular, one of which is the timeline, another which is home keys. We've got to do 48 units for a home key. And so, we're not able to reduce the unit size any at this point. So, it will be iterative, but I think this is pretty comfortably where the entire Shelter Inc.'s operational team, the architecture team, the engineering consultants in our first pass. We did do a pre-app with the planning department. So, planning will get their chunk to design it, and so will building.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so I'm curious, Jake, because I'm looking at your website presentations of some of the... You're featured, you're featured housing in other cities. San Leandro, for example, they're tiny homes. It's cute, cute little villages, colorful. It's great, great-looking. Livermore is another one called Goodness Village. And again, those are cute little homes. And Palo Alto, Castro Valley, you know, these are all... The interiors are great. They're all studios, which is what these are going to be on Broadway. So, I don't see any modular or stackable units that you've worked with in developing. How is this going to be adding this to your portfolio? How is this going to be a successful program?
Yeah, we have not done any stackable modular at this point. We are familiar with the unit and the studio size on design. But that's exactly why we went with Factory OS, and then we also went with Canon Constructors as the general contractor. We also went with the structural engineer that's familiar with modular, the electrical engineer that's familiar with modular projects, and an architecture team that's familiar with modular projects, just to cover all of our bases and cover those gaps of experience that we don't necessarily have. The team on this project is about as good as it gets. I think both Kevin and Matt have been part of those conversations, and they can echo that same statement. But this, you know, we went with companies and consultants and engineers that were familiar with this project and have done these projects before.
Great, terrific. If I had anything really problematic to say about this project, it comes in the... What the bottom line is for the construction costs, and which will fluctuate naturally. And when that fluctuates, materials are going to be there or they're not going to be there. And please explain again to me what the five-year operation plan for Shelter Inc. is going to... The report, staff report states $1.7 million a year for operating, annual operating costs. And where does that money come from? Because once ARPA... I mean, I saw ARPA on there, and I don't know what Vallejo ARP is. Or was that a typo?
Home ARP funding. It's an allocation for housing through ARPA, separate from your ARPA that you'll be allocating.
And is that a one-time?
Correct.
A one-time thing? So, this project is going to be permanent for decades. Where will this funding come from?
So, this property will operate off of the income from subsidies and rents that are paid. The property itself does not have a debt service. Therefore, you don't... So, you're not having to pay back a mortgage. You're not having to pay back interest. You're able to use all the money that comes in to operate the property. That's paying operating expenses, insurance, all of the regular things that happen.
Staff.
Staff, yes. All the regular things that happen. And then, being able to fold the rest of the money that's left that would normally go to a bank or a funder or whoever's paying for permanent financing for the property, that money then rolls into the services plan. When you look at rents and subsidy increases every year, the residence rent doesn't increase. They stay at the 30% of income. But your housing authority subsidy contract rents, they increase every year by FMRs, according to HUD. So, as you go along through your years, you have an increase of funding that allows you to continue paying for your services and operation. So, it is a self-sustaining...
Sustaining funding, okay. So, I quoted you on that, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, you please, absolutely.
I wrote that in there.
I built that.
Okay. And so, Katie, you talked about the smoking thing. Yeah, I was going to bring that up as well. We just passed an ordinance, and, you know, a lot of these folks have nothing else. You know, they have the nicotine. You know, if they can't get anything else, it's the nicotine that keeps them going. You know, it's got to be tough for those no-smoking jails and stuff. So, you know, I could imagine having a fit if I couldn't get a cigarette because I needed it really badly. So, if we can incorporate... You've got neighbors right next door, not the dog part, but you've got that apartment complex right next door. And that ordinance was specific to multi-unit housing.
Correct.
So, bus lines, what are the local bus lines to get folks to hospitals, to schools, to take night classes or day classes?
Yeah, so we are .1 mile away from two bus stops, so within walking distance. And we are .5 miles away from four grocery stores in the area. So, they are within walking distance to both food and transportation.
So, in the rain, they would have to walk a mile to go catch a bus?
.1.
Oh, .1, my bad. Okay, and what line is that? Is that on Sonoma Boulevard?
I would need to double-check the exact line on that.
I mean, that takes you downtown, is what I'm thinking. Okay, all right, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
They can also get a Uber credit from us or a Lyft.
Okay. Would you put the sixth slide back up on the screen, the one that leads off with development milestones, firm foundations? Thank you. Ms. Hayes. We're not acting upon the development agreement tonight. And in looking at the projections of these milestones, if there is going to be further action by this body or any other body, when would that fit into this milestone projection time schedule?
That's a great question. So, the funding itself creates a requirement for a ministerial application process rather than discretionary, as I spoke to before. As we're working on a purchase and sale agreement, we understand that we need contracts in place for the construction and development, and then also for the long-term services. So, we will be bringing those to you post-haste. Veronica and I have the next two Fridays scheduled for several city attorney slash planning and development projects. So, we'll be working on those as soon as possible. We actually do have draft agreements and contracts... We actually do have draft agreements and contracts right now already that we've gotten from Firm Foundation and Shelter Inc. that they've used with other projects. And so we're just looking at and comparing, contrasting and make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is legally. So I'm hoping, let's see, probably, oh, it would be prior to building permit issuance that we would be coming back with those contracts and agreements to the council.
So that would be prior to July 15th, 2022?
Prior to August 15th, 2022.
Building permits. We're going to be dark in August. So with that thought in mind...
Well, it might be tight to get the last one in July, but I'll shoot for that as my goal. And worst case scenario, then yes, we'd have to come back the first meeting in September. That's a good point.
All right. And that is when all of the considerations will be reviewed as to how many people, what type of services, where the ashtrays are going to be, all this, all these development things that the public expressed their concerns about tonight, right?
Yes.
And when that notice goes out, that will be in the form of a regular city council agenda or maybe a special city council agenda. And will that be distributed to people in the American Canyon City?
No. Our code doesn't require it.
Okay, but as a courtesy matter, could we provide it at least, notice at least to the American City Canyon, City Council?
We can do that.
I'm sure they would appreciate that. Thank you. So if we approve tonight, the acceptance of these funds, and things don't go according to this milestone development, what do we have to do about those funds? Do we have to return them to the state?
Correct.
Okay, so they'll be sequestered pending starting, actual starting of the building. And will the city of Vallejo be responsible for any expenses incurred prior to that return of these funds?
That's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head. Natalie, do you know?
I would need to consult the agreement again to confirm...
Maybe Jake knows.
Jake?
There's a couple of things to be aware of. One is the eight-month timeline is a, is a bonus structure timeline. You actually have 12 months to expend the funds.
Yeah, I understand that. But if we decide somewhere along the line that this is a no-go, are we going, we're going to have to return the funds, the 12.8 million to the state of California. Will we be responsible for any funds in addition to that $12.8 million? Cost of our staff, clearly. Anything else?
I do not believe so.
I do not know the answer to that.
I, I don't believe so. I believe it would just be the funds that we've expended through the 12.1 million that we'd have to pay back.
We should probably know that. Okay. And should the project proceed with the anticipation being that the property will be owned by the city of Vallejo? What control, if any, will we retain over that property as the property owner, other than as, as might be set forth in the development agreement?
So those agreements and those contracts are binding. And so that's our authority as the property owner, which actually gives the city council more authority than, say, other low-income housing projects that the city doesn't own. And then you have to go through the whole neighborhood law program and the citations and the code enforcement and all of that. We could just cancel the contract and move on to a new operator. That's not going to happen. But let's say they weren't fulfilling their agreements according to the contract, then we would put them in breach and then we could move forward if it wasn't being operated the way that we wanted it to be operated.
Okay. And if there is a nuisance created as a result of the activities on this property, whether it's from the, the management of the facility or the activities of the individual residing there, what is the exposure of the city of Vallejo as a defendant in being named in, as a defendant in a nuisance action? Mr. Razor?
I would defer to the city attorney.
We are the agency that would be responsible for policing it for nuisances there. And so I don't know that we would go after ourselves. We would go after whatever's causing the nuisance and get that resolved because it'll be property, as I understand it, that we're going to own. So since the city owns property, it will be a lot easier to address nuisances than it would be on, on a piece of private property and a lot faster.
Okay. So this is, this application is site-specific only. If for some reason this site does not pan out, the money goes back to the state, right? No questions asked?
Correct.
Okay. That will complete my questions. Thank you very much. Are there any further questions from council member or is there a motion on this? And remember, it's a very narrow motion. Maybe we could put that on the screen at this time. Okay. So allow me to point out that this is not the approval of the project itself. Make that very clear. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designate to accept the Department of Housing and Community Development, Department HCD grant award for home loan, home key round two in the amount of $12,901,866 and provide the notice of intent to amend the capital grant. Do I, can I just do it in one motion? And provide notice of intent to amend the capital grant contribution and contribution fund number 221, fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget to recognize the home key grant revenue in the amount of $12,901,866 and appropriate expenditures of $12,901,866 during the eligible funding time period.
And let me add on to the last part of that second motion, comma, subject to finalization of the development agreement. Okay, thank you. With that thought, that caveat, additional caveat in mind, do you have a question?
Mayor, you wouldn't need to do that.
Mr. Mayor, just to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Veronica, go ahead. Sorry.
Just a clarification, sorry. It's not technically a development agreement. We have a series of agreements that we will be entering into with operators, construction, et cetera. So maybe you would want to say subject to necessary agreements because it isn't really a development agreement in the classic sense of the word.
Okay, so let me clarify your comment here. If we approve the motion, the resolution as presented, will the city be expending any funds prior to the final, final approval by this council of that project?
No, we don't have anywhere to expend them. We won't have, have at that point a contract with anyone to expend the money.
Okay.
We will have to enter into those contracts in order to have those expenditures take place. Finance wouldn't, without a contract to tie the expenditure to, finance wouldn't kind of check for it in any of them.
Okay, then with that understanding caveat in mind, I would ask, please vote, as indicated on the screen.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ariela Post and Councilmember Brown absent.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. We've been at this for three hours, so we will take a 10-minute break.
I think my estimate is going to be off.
Avery?
More by side.
Good.
...[1115.13]
Now, ready?
Okay, if we could reassemble, we'll go ahead and start moving towards getting started again. Thank you all for taking your seats. And with that, Madam Clerk, what do you call 4B, please?
Study Session on Roads and Infrastructure Ballot Measure. Recommendation: Direct staff to return on July 12th with the necessary action to submit a 0.875% transaction and use tax ordinance for consideration by the voters on the November 8, 2022 ballot.
Thank you. Naveed, would you start our two-minute public sign-up clock? And do we have a presentation from staff on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Council. Terrence Davis is Assistant City Manager for the record. And with me, I have Curtis Bello here with FM3. We're going to tag-team tonight to present this information. So I'm going to lead this off and provide some context and background. And then Curtis will jump in to provide some information on our recent polling effort. And then I'll come back at the end and conclude with some potential recommendations for the council as we move forward. So with that, we will get started. So just want to set the stage and kind of why we're here and provide a little bit of a workshop and some context in terms of our infrastructure. That's what got us here, that as you hear the presentation tonight will be really driving the staff recommendation is, we've heard a lot from the community and certainly from this council that there's a desire to increase local investment in our infrastructure. And so we're going to talk about that infrastructure first, just to set the stage again, so folks understand and we have kind of a common knowledge in that, you know, everyone understands the magnitude of the issue. And so this first slide here is what's called our Pavement Condition Index. And it's a standard in the industry. Every city uses this standard. And PCI is the acronym we use, is on a scale just like when we were in school, from zero to 100. And the grades are very similar. So a 70 would be a C or satisfactory, so on and so forth. And so MTC, every couple of years, we have the opportunity to participate in what's called the Pavement Technical Assistance Program. And in that program, we have a consultant who comes out in inventories and surveys our entire system, our entire road network. That was just recently completed, so that report with MTC's help was completed in April of this year. And so this is the data from that. And our arterials, so our major streets in Vallejo, which are 21% of the system, currently have an average PCI of 60. Collectors, 16% of the system are at 55. And then our residential streets, which are the largest majority of our road network, are at an average of 44. So certainly with averages, that means some are higher, some are lower. But we do have residential streets that are in the single digits in terms of their pavement condition index, so they're at total reconstruction. So in that chart, you see, based on the PCI range, there is a prescribed or a recommended approach in terms of repair of that particular stretch of infrastructure. So, you know, for anything below a 40, really what's recommended or called for is reconstruction. And reconstruction is very costly to, you're rebuilding the entire road, pulling up the base, and doing entire new construction of the road. Next slide. So in terms of the forecast, where are we going with our pavement condition? Right now, we're spending approximately $4 million on average a year. That's a combination of a little over $3 million and some change of gas tax. And then there's also $1 million or so of general fund. And that's been fairly consistent for the last few years. The general, excuse me, the gas tax fluctuates a bit based on driver patterns and kind of the calculations on how that allocation is given to Vallejo. But generally speaking, over the last few years, that is our expenditure. And so we did a model of what our pavement condition index would look like if we continued at our current spending level, which we've been doing for some time, so status quo. The five-year outlook is that in five years from now, we would anticipate to see a nine-point drop in our PCI, our condition, down to a 39. And as you may imagine, if we projected this out another five years, 10 years, or so on and so forth, we would continue to see that pavement condition drop. That doesn't mean we wouldn't be doing projects, but the overall, because of the amount of deferred maintenance, which is 630 million, I'm rounding up, 628 million of deferred maintenance, we don't eat into that backlog of maintenance. So we might do a project on Tennessee or Springs Road, you know, in two or $3 million project, but we just don't invest to the level needed to eat into that deferred maintenance. So we'll continue to see our PCI slide, which is why we're here today to have this conversation. Next slide. When we do our technical assistance program with MTC, we typically will model various scenarios just to provide perspective in terms of what would happen at various levels of investment. And these five models, we've done this year over year, but it shows with zero budget what would happen. So if we defunded the $4 million, what we might anticipate, dropping to a 37. If we continue at our current level, which I just talked about on the previous slide, that would be a 39. And then to maintain our current PCI, which is 48, so just to stay where we are today, the level of investment needed to do that is $30 million a year. If we want to get a better grade in schools and increase PCI by 5%, so moving into the 50s, that's a $45 million number. And then if we want to move into high 80s, that would be, or mid 80s, excuse me, there would be a one-time need of, kind of a catch-up need to fund $360 million. And then year two through five, in a five-year scenario, we would need to increase that expenditure to 90 million. Next slide. And just for context, I do want to say 84 PCI is awesome, it's ambitious. But for context, the county average in Solano is 67. So in terms of a benchmark, 84 would be aspirational, and not many cities, if any, in the county have that number. So similarly, also to provide context for our facilities, we do, we just completed in 2020, 2021, a complete assessment of all of our buildings. And we did that in part because we have a new asset management system that's been implemented in the last few years, and we are populating data in terms of life cycle costs and how much it's going to cost us to maintain and repair those facilities. So just like there's a PCI for our facilities, there is a standard called FCI, Facilities Condition Index, we're full of acronyms. And that report is presented in a different way, it's not as straightforward, but essentially there's a ratio, which is, if you look at the cost of maintenance over a 10-year period and divided by the value of the building, you get this percentage. So as an example, City Hall, the estimated replacement value is 33 million, based on the report. And you see there's a $10 million estimate in terms of maintenance, so that's how you get the 30%. Those percentages are helpful in that if you look at the ranges and descriptions on the bottom of the slide, when you're in the 20 and 30% range, you are reaching end of useful life. That doesn't mean you can't renovate and refurbish your facility, but that just gives you an idea in terms of how we might make assumptions about life cycle costing. So a city, or excuse me, a facility like City Hall, which was built in the 70s, as we get into the next 10 years, we will be evaluating the future of the facility. And in that process, we would anticipate to expend at least $10 million in ongoing maintenance. And that's for HVAC systems, that's for renovations, for accessibility improvements, that's for our systems breaking, electrical, plumbing, and the like needing to be replaced just because of the age of the facility. So we did that for all facilities, I just wanted to provide a snapshot to give some perspective again. JFK, you see the number there, City Hall, our Corporation Yard, which does have a few buildings, and then 111 Amador, which is our police facility. And that, again, those costs are just for ongoing maintenance, that doesn't include any improvements to renovate it for operations. That's just keeping it kind of status quo, moving forward, repairing what breaks. So with that context, next slide, please. What I want to do now is turn it over to Kurt and have him give the results of a recent survey that was completed regarding potential future ballot measure. And the context again of this is that we wanted to look at revenue options that we could bring forward to the council for local investment. And so citywide survey to assess likelihood of those ballots passing is fairly standard in the industry to take a look at. And so FM3, who we've worked with for many years, completed a recent survey, so now Kurt will go over the results of that.
Great, thank you, Terrence. I'm Kurt Bello, I'm a partner and COO of FM3 Research, and been doing research in the city for a long time, happy to present the results to mayor and the city council here. I'm going to apologize in advance that I'm on day three of COVID, where I've been in and out of bed, so I may have to hit the cough button and drink some tea now and then. So with that caveat, I can talk a little bit about the survey we recently conducted. And by recently, I mean we just finished interviews on May 26th, so this is very hot-off-the-presses research here. We looked at the opinions of those who are likely to vote this coming November, so this wasn't a resident survey of all adults or everyone in the city, but just those who are likely to vote this coming November. We conducted a little over 500 interviews, we reached out to people, telephone calls, email invitations, and text invitations. And we conducted data collection via telephone interviews or online interviews, and we offered to survey it in a variety of different languages on the phone. Kind of the key number here before we move on to the next slide is that margin of sampling error, given some of the weighting that we did. Questions asked of the full sample, about a 5% margin of sampling error, and anything split sampled, meaning half the respondents got that question, is about 7. So keeping 5 and 7 in mind is sort of helpful as we go through. Next slide, please. The first section here I'm going to go through is before we get to the potential measures that Terrence had referenced, just opinions about life in the city. And I think they'll be maybe surprising, maybe not surprising, but they'll be, I think there's some pretty strong opinions about life in Vallejo right now, and our survey results will show that. Next slide. So the first thing, question we have here is a version of the old Gallup question, right direction, we use wrong direction here instead of wrong track. The blue bar is, and this is italicized language is the question that we used, is do you feel like things are headed in the right direction or wrong direction in the city of Vallejo, or have they not changed over the last couple of years? So, and you'll see those blue bars are percentages of those who feel like things are headed in the right direction, orange, wrong, and gray is not much change, or they don't have an opinion one way or another. You'll see that back at the Great Recession, bankruptcy, those wrong direction numbers were off the charts, up at 84%. There has been a rebounding in the latter part of the last decade, where you got to be a plurality or so feeling things are headed in the right direction. We conducted a survey for the city last July, and so all these 2020 numbers, which we do a lot of comparisons to, were from last July. You'll see those opinions changed pretty markedly. Right direction numbers dropped down to 14%, and this current survey, they're basically unchanged statistically here, where there's an even split between the wrong direction and the not much changed, and very few in the optimistic bucket of right direction. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here's a favorability question. The blue bars are shades of favorable opinion, orange are shades of unfavorable, and we asked about city council and city government overall. In this case, only fourteen percent expressed a favorable opinion of, of either the council or the government overall, and a majority had unfavorable opinions. A reasonable chunk, there were gray bars, they couldn't express an opinion one way or another. And we have asked about one of these questions on the next slide in the past, which is the favorability. So if we go to the next slide, please. We have asked about opinions of the latest city government overall. We started asking this back in two thousand and eighteen. We asked that in a community survey, so this was, that was of all residents, that's a little bit different. But you'll see that, just looking at the trend here, that's, it's, it's gone down. And so even from twenty twenty, which was a voter survey again, that's gone down about half as much. Next slide, please. So what are people and voters in this particular case worried about in Vallejo? Pardon me? A question that we've asked in other surveys is, here's a bunch of problems facing the community that the people may think are problems. You tell us if you think they're a serious problem or not. And you can say, yeah, it's extremely very serious problem. Maybe you're like, eh, somewhat serious problem, or maybe you don't think it's a problem at all. Those are the blue bars there. For this type of question, we tend to focus on the more intense reactions, either extremely very serious problem. If we have three slides in this series and we summarize them on the right-hand side, that extremely variant sorted by that, and you'll see that everything above that dashed red line is kind of the top tier of problems, where three-quarters or more have responded that they're extremely very serious problem. That's a pretty high number, and around fifty-ish percent, plus or minus a few points, said extremely serious problem. And they're falling to a couple categories here. If you put homelessness, public dumping, things of that nature, and then also public safety items, either specifically gangs, you know, guns and crime, or just the broad concept of community safety, we're seen as the most pressing problems facing the community. Now, the presentation that Terrence just went through, also mentioned, talked about roads, that's a pretty high level of concern as well, more than two-thirds feel like it's an extremely very serious problem, forty-two percent extremely serious problem, just maybe a check below those other items. But you'll see, concern levels fairly high about a number of these items. Go to the next slide, please. Here you start to see the, the, the blue bars aren't getting much bigger, so people aren't dismissing these, but the darker orange bars are getting smaller, which means that these are seen as broadly problems in Vallejo, but not intensely so. Cost of living, fifty-four percent, you know, see that as a problem. Inefficiency in city government, local economy, cost of housing, they're not all the way, they're sort of more middle-tier concerns. Go to the next slide, the third and final slide in this chart here. Now you see a few of those darker blue bars get pretty darn big, traffic congestion, not a lot of worry about that, too much growth in development, not a lot of worry about that. Even the amount people paying city taxes is not seen as a particularly high level of concern there. And concerns about the coronavirus, which I have right now, they're actually relatively low compared to other concerns in the city. Next slide, just looks at a few select tracks here because it was interesting to see that the cost of living concerns, which have been relatively steady for the last several years, jumped up a lot, and we're seeing this all over the place, I'm surprised. And, and some of those concerns about a lack of community safety that also jumped up quite a bit as well from the twenty-twenty survey to twenty-twenty-two. Next slide, please. So this is a, a proxy question for support for some sort of revenue measure, and the italicized language is generic in nature. It just says basically, does the city need more funds to provide services? We don't say how the funds will be generated, or what services this will be funding, but just a gut feeling that the city needs more money. You'll see that going back, the last few surveys we conducted, there was about four in five who thought there was greater some need for funds. That's actually gone down some in this survey to seventy-one percent. It's still seven out of ten, that's still a pretty high number of people, voters who feel that the city needs more funds, but it's not as an acutely held point of view as it was in the past, leading up, even to the last election. Next slide, please. All right, pardon me. Okay, next slide, please. Now we're going to talk about the ballot measures we looked at here. And so what we did is we had two measures that we were focusing on, basically a sales tax for streets and roads, or general purpose sales tax. And we gave them equal weighting in this survey. And this is a reminder of, if you're dedicating funds from a ballot measure, that's a, call a special purpose measure, and the vote threshold's two-thirds. So for the roads measure, you got to get to that sixty-six point seven percent to pass a general purpose measure, you know, put on like the ballot this coming November, which would be a majority vote, so fifty percent plus one. And those are the two measures we looked at. What we did is everybody who took the survey was asked about both of them at the beginning. And we made, we rotated the order so they, there wasn't any bias about coming first or second. So everyone got asked about those. Then we went through a bunch of ways that funds could be spent, and asked people to prioritize those. Then the second, probably last third of the survey or so, we went through arguments in favor of a measure or in opposed to the measure. And we just focused on the measure that people heard first for those subsequent, because it's a little too hard in the survey, even online or on, on the phone, to keep track of being asked about two different measures that in some cases they found similar. So the subsequent votes in this survey were just about the measure they heard first, to keep it a little clearer in people's minds. And that gives us a bit of a sense for a ceiling and floor of support for a measure. We, here's reasons to vote yes, how would you vote these reasons to vote no? And gives us a sense for that. Next slide, please. So here is hypothetical ballot language for that streets measure. So this is a two-thirds, we went through many iterations of these hypothetical seventy-five words, legal review, finance review. This would be, in theory, the language that could appear on a ballot today's election day, so something symbolic about talking about a ballot measure on election day. And this is for a point eight seven five, this is the maximum to do, given the, the current limits in your, in your county and city, how much we generate, and this is focusing on roads. And we picked some things about improving some of the roads and sidewalks, safer to school, fixing potholes and sidewalks, and preventing future deterioration, things of that nature. And then we said, well, okay, so on the next slide is, how would you vote? You either read this on the phone, or you read it yourself online, how would you vote on this measure? And it didn't seem to matter a ton which order they heard this measure. So if you heard it first, your support was around fifty-nine percent, and second fifty-four percent, kind of margin of error difference. And the scale we used here is if you indicate yes or no was your first gut reaction, we then pushed you. Is that a definitely or probable yes or no? If you were initially undecided, we asked if you're leaning one way or another. So that gives us three flavors of yes, three flavors of no. And that gray bar in the middle is a pretty strong undecided, because you were asked twice essentially. And for sales tax measures, they tend to be a pretty small number of undecideds. It's a easy mechanism for people to get. So this is hovering around two-thirds out the gate as a benchmark. If something is viable at the two-thirds level, you generally want to see support exceed the threshold, hopefully by the margin of sampling error of the survey, which in this case, for the full sample, is around five percent. And you like to see those definitely yeses get to forty percent. So not far off of those benchmarks, but a tick below them. I'll get to the, the, the support for this move pretty dramatically, just went through the survey, though. Next slide is the other measure, the general purpose measure, same amount of tax, same amount of money we generate each year, but broadly speaking, fire protection, emergency response, street maintenance is in there, but along with youth programs, homelessness issues, the issues around police officers and transparency, things of that broader nature. And the next slide shows reactions to that measure. You see here, the, the order did matter a little bit more, when people were asked about it first, their support was down at fifty-three percent, and when they were asked second, support was a little, a little bit higher. You combine the full sample, everyone, because they were asked this, it's in the upper fifties. So that's support, that's pretty consistently below support for a roads measure, but it's also above more comfortably the majority vote threshold for a general purpose measure. Pardon me, go to the, the next slide, please. And I mentioned, we went through some ways that funds could be spent from one of these two measures, and we asked respondents, we put them in random order, and it's a pretty long list. Most of those things were split sampled, so you didn't hear all of these, way too much to digest, but we would give them to you in, in random order, and, and half would get some, half get the other, but they were balanced out topically, thematically. And we asked respondents to indicate whether they thought spending in this particular way would be other extremely important, very important, somewhat or not too important. And some of these are very specific items, right? Preventing dumping of light, repairing streets to prevent damage to cars and trucks. Others are a little more, as we go through these slides, bigger picture here, like keeping public places healthy, safe, and clean, because we're not specific about what those public places are, but more big picture. On this first slide, the, these are the highest priorities here, where the extremely important numbers were hovering around fifty percent. Addressing homelessness had a lot of intensity behind it, fifty-two percent, thought that was extremely important, but was packing a lot of punch there. Next slide, please. These are all items that frankly are seen as very important here. This is four out of five, so like these are either extremely or very important. Some of the intensity numbers are, get, get, drop a little bit here. We see many more of those road items popping up here, maintaining the roads, repairing the roads, repairing additional local streets and sidewalks. We, because we had a road specific measure, we went through many different ways of describing how those funds could be spent. It didn't seem to matter as much, a bunch of them kind of tested in the same ballpark, it just really want roads repaired. Next slide, please. So here you see some, some extremely very important numbers, dipped below eighty percent, but there are a couple of these have pretty high levels of intensity here, get above fifty percent, and extremely important. Police transparency and accountability, anti-drug, anti-gang programs, recruiting and retaining qualified police officers, all those are seen as extremely important by half of respondents. I think one of the big takeaways is in these first three slides, there's not huge differentiation here, and there's a lot of things that three-quarters of voters would really want to see more funds spent on. Next slide, please. Pardon me, this is finally where those solid majorities feel like these are very important, and those darker blue bars, extremely important ones, are finally getting out of the forties and fifties and down into the thirties. Talking about bicycle pedestrian safety issues, rebuilding the cracked and hearing sidewalks, a little bit lower here, stuff around the oversight, it's a little bit lower down the list. And then the next slide is the final one of this series, and it's the first time we start to see those darker blue bars get into the teens, and some of those orange bars get a little bit bigger, issues related to traffic, wellness category, and issues related to the police stations as well. Pardon me, my apologies. All right, so the next section here is those pros and cons that we were talking about. So next slide, please. So the positive and negative statements, pros and cons. So the, the first bullet point is just the different themes that we went through, which is talking about, you know, we've, we've, we've experienced about driving on the streets, talking about the number of roads that needed, the miles of roads that need to be maintained, talking about the connection, but the initial, these arguments went for both the special purpose and the general purpose measure, about reopening closed fire stations and the impact on response times, keeping funds local of variety of different services that a general purpose measure could be spent on, talking about generating funds to operate a new homeless identification center, modernizing the police station, things of that nature, a bunch of rationale for supporting one of those measures. Then we came back on the flip side and said, particularly for the roads measure, say, well, the gas tax should be paying for these things. And then a bunch of these other arguments were more broadly applied, applicable to any local revenue measure, which is there's some tax fatigue, sales taxes are regressive, the statement's critical of the city's financial management, cost of living and inflation around control, which shouldn't be raising your taxes here, things of that nature. So let's see what the impact of these was. Next slide, please. So this is the roads measure, and this is where I sort of hinted at that. So this is the, just the folks who heard the roads measure first. So that half the sample started off at fifty-nine percent, so a little bit above two-thirds. We went through arguments in favor of a measure, and support went down a few points. It's not totally unheard of, it's in the margin of error kind of difference, but it's not necessarily encouraging. But we came in with some of the critical statements, the negatives essentially, support really dropped a lot, and I don't normally see drops like this. So forty-six, by the end of the survey, after going through pros and cons, only forty-seven percent said they'd vote yes for a measure, which is not only less than a majority vote, but nowhere near a two-thirds vote. And if you take out those who are only leaning yes, that support is actually even lower at forty-one percent. So maybe in a certain electoral climate, those folks leaning yes might stay that way. If it's a more pessimistic climate, they're probably more likely to end up voting no at the end. If you take them out, it's, it's a far cry from, from two-thirds, unfortunately. The next slide is looking at the general purpose measure. So this is, that's just the people who heard the general purpose measure first. So it started a little bit lower there at fifty-three percent. Support did go up after positives to fifty-seven percent, and after negatives, came back down to fifty percent. And seven percent of these respondents were actually just leaning yes. So if you took them out, we'd still be below a two-third, sorry, a majority vote threshold as well. So not nearly as negative as the two-thirds vote on the, the roads measure, but clearly a pretty tenuous spot for a majority vote measure as well. That gets me to some conclusions here. So the first slide in the conclusion section, pardon me, is just about views in Vallejo. So it felt like looking at some of these tracks that things could hit a pretty low point in their Great Recession and bankruptcy, and that there is a rebounding. People had felt a little more optimistic about city government, life in the city, where things were headed. Those opinions dropped in summer of twenty twenty. Now, in fairness, those dropped kind of everywhere in the summer of twenty twenty, but they stayed at that same level, and in some cases dropped a little bit more in the intergating times. And, and concerns are particularly acute about homeless and dumping and public safety issues. And, and roads, there's a lot of concern about that, and there's some concerns about financial management as well. But all that being set aside, solid majority feels like the city needs more funding for services. Now, that's not at the same high level mark as was in twenty twenty and in twenty nineteen, but it is still a solid seventy percent, so there's at least some need for funding. Next slide, please. So we're looking at viability here, and this is FM3 just saying, us looking at the numbers here, you have a variety of other factors you have to take into consideration. This is just us doing a survey and, and trying to statistically look at where voters' heads are and how they might react to a measure, and giving us, giving you our opinions on what these numbers portend for a potential measure this November. But as Terrence laid out, there's other, other factors you need to take into consideration, including your need and, and timing of things. But looking at two-thirds measure, with that support, it, it real, sort of two-thirds, but it really dropped very significantly there. And general purpose measure, that went pretty, got pretty low as well, and given the fact that we were asking that, of only half the sample, the margin of sampling error is around seven percent, so it could be kind of all over the place there a little bit. So while there's a lot of need for, perceived need for funding, it's not as acute as it was in the past, there's just these concerns, and we saw this throughout the survey about, frankly, you know, financial management of the city, cost of living concerns, and it feels like that initial level of support for these measures seemed, the beginning part of the survey is, is much more tenuous than you might think. And when we came in with the critical statements, support really dropped, particularly for our two-thirds roads measures. So this is a snapshot in time, things can change, but right now, that two-thirds measure doesn't look particularly viable, given that, from the survey results at least, that it dropped to forty-seven percent at the end of the survey. As I noted, that's a very significant drop. The majority vote measure, it also would face probably some pretty long odds if you're ending at fifty percent, and a reasonable proportion of those were those who are leaning yes. And given some of the other underlying views of how things are headed in city government, it feels like that would also be, be challenging, but a much better proposition. it feels like that would also be, be challenging, but a much better proposition than a, than a two thirds measure. Again, this is not us telling, suggesting what you should do, but this is what these numbers show us and you have to make the, the harder decision. But with that, I think Terrence, I'm supposed to hand it back to you, is that right?
Yeah, thanks Kurt. Uh, so I just have a couple more slides I want to go through, just in terms of some options and a breakdown of our existing tax structure and what, uh, some comparisons would be if we were to move forward, uh, with an increase. So this is just a breakdown of, um, all of the various elements of our current tax rate, which is 8.375. You see there's state general fund, uh, also some Salano County, uh, tax increments. And then, um, the, the last tax there, that one percent is the measure V, which was formerly measure B, which measure V, um, removed the sunset. So that's that current one percent. Next slide. Just to clarify as well, what's taxable and what isn't, and, uh, it's not broadly known, I think by the public in terms of what the, the, the tax applies to, sales tax. So necessities, it is, uh, does not apply to necessities of life, so food, health, et cetera. Um, alternative energy, art exhibits, nonprofits, uh, transportation, uh, petroleum, housing, leasing, manufactured housing, building leasing. Um, and then, uh, finally, uh, gross receipts and transactions not considered sale, uh, or purchases. Next slide. So, um, I won't spend a lot of time on this because I think we can, this is just really for discussion. I think Kurt, uh, already went through a couple of different options. There are some limitations in terms of the numbers of words, 75, and, um, certainly, um, we can have some discussion about how, um, if the council directs staff to come back with this, this is what we would bring back in, uh, July. So, um, based on what, uh, information FM3 has provided, at this point in time, this would be general purpose language that would speak to, uh, road repair, but also some of the other programs that have been identified as being important. Where do, where does this put us or where would this put us right now? Again, we're at 8.375. Uh, you see here a comparison of other, uh, folks around the Bay Area and in the county. Um, it would move us towards, uh, the, kind of the top or mid of, uh, that tax rate. I will note, uh, Benicia is considering a, a measure as well. And then American Canyon, just for comparison, uh, because it's close to us, uh, is at 7.75. So right now our estimates are that, uh, a 0.875 measure would generate approximately 18 million per year, about 500 million over 25 years. That assumes there will be no sunset, so, um, and then certainly a general purpose measure, the council has a discretion to spend on any, uh, general city services. I've listed a few examples here, but, um, it could go beyond this list. This is just again lining up with the survey results and some of the priorities that the community has identified and, and/or the council has identified that they want to address. So, uh, we talked about road repairs and building maintenance, but certainly code enforcement, homelessness services, youth programs could all be eligible to be funded with this source of revenue. So a, uh, one kind of path forward would be if you directed staff to come back, we would come back with the introduction of an ordinance. Right now, uh, we would target to do that on July 12th. The subsequent meeting on the 26th, we would adopt the ordinance, also various resolutions that include identifying which members of council might author arguments for or against a measure. And then also directing the city attorney to draft an impartial analysis. Um, argument rebuttals, uh, and calling and ordering the submission of the ordinance to, uh, qualified electors. So those would all be resolutions that, that the council would need to adopt. And the last step, not the last step, but the most important step, uh, after that would be, uh, before August 12th, you would have to direct the city clerk to submit those resolutions, uh, to Salano County. Subsequent to August 12th, there's a series of additional steps, but that's the, the hard line deadline in terms of submitting a ballot measure. So with that, that concludes, uh, our presentation and we're here for questions.
Okay, thank you very much for that presentation. Very, uh, sobering would be an inappropriate word. Um, are there any questions from council, from staff? I see none. Do we know whether the county is going to put onto the November ballot, a sales tax proposal to fund fire districts for rural fighting? Has that been resolved yet?
I don't know that we know definitively that that's been resolved, but we have heard, um, over the last few months that the county was looking at a measure, uh, to fund rural fire protection. I think they were initially shooting for getting on today's ballot and didn't meet that or didn't, uh, achieve that for whatever reasons, but the most recent information I've been told is that, uh, they are moving forward with a sales tax initiative for November.
So if they put their ballot initiative on the November ballot to raise taxes to the maximum, and we put a tax or taxes, tax ballot, measures plural, onto the ballot, who prevails? County, do they, do they preempt us? Is it the highest vote getter? What happens if they're all passed?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
That's unresolved in the law right now.
Pardon me?
It's unresolved in the law right now. We don't know. So the, according, there's an agency called CDTFA, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, that's charged with collecting sales tax and transaction taxes in California. Um, they put out a bulletin that basically says, if you have competing tax measures, the entities that are proposing the tax measures should either one, negotiate before they put the measures on the ballot and come up with a solution, or two, if they can't agree, submit a request to the attorney general for an opinion. Neither one of those things is likely to happen, uh, in, in our opinion, uh, before you can get it onto the ballot. So we honestly, there's no guidance in the law that tells us what happens, uh, when we're all competing for the same 2% cap.
Have we had any discussions with the county about our concerns to raise our tax and what their response, if any, has been?
We've only had some high level discussions, uh, nothing in detail.
So we don't know.
So, so we don't know.
Okay. So if we don't put any tax measure on the ballot and the county does, it takes us to the maximum and we have no further grounds or maneuvering ability at all, right?
Unless you get a special legislation through the California State Legislature, that's true.
Right, that's if the law changes, but with this present state of the law, they, they ba-, they basically would take it to the max and if we didn't have a measure on the ballot, we either live or die by the outcome of that, which I understand will mostly go to fund rural fire conditions in the upper part of the county around Vacaville and Fairfield and Dixon, Rio Vista, whereas an urban development such as we are in Benicia, probably has very little need for that. So we basically, I think, would be paying for something from which we, we derive, if not nothing, very close to nothing. And I've been told that the fire chiefs in Salano County are not in favor of the county fire district tax. I don't know if that is correct, that's just what I've been told. Uh, I know our chief is not in favor of it. This kind of puts us into a catch 22 situation where if we do nothing, we don't put it on the ballot and they do, we pay and get next to nothing. If we do put it on the ballot, the voters could decide, but if all three measures pass, we don't know the legal outcome, so we go to the attorney general for a ruling, I guess. And if theirs loses and ours wins, then I guess they couldn't put one on the ballot in the future to raise it to the maximum, except for Vallejo probably, because we're just, are just our city. So we have a lot of unknown problems here. And we have a deadline of August 26th, where we have to make a decision, yes, put it on or no, don't put it on. Uh, here's my individual feeling, I think we should put a special tax on the ballot despite what the report said about its likeliness of failing. And the reason I do that is that I think the citizens are fed up enough where if they want to have their roads, roads repaired, they need to put their money where their mouth is or henceforth forever remain silent. That's the quandary I see. Whether we limit it to roads only or whether we expand it to roads plus one or two or three or whatever items, could be us, up to us. If we go with the general tax proposal only, I think there is public, considerable public distrust in government as a whole and the city of Vallejo government, including the council and the staff, uh, very, very decidedly, as revealed by the survey. A vote in favor of only puts it on the ballot, it doesn't say you're going to support it or not support it, you can make your mind up later and your argument up later. But given the unknown position of the county and the unknown outcome of the law, if they all pass, I think we're almost in that catch 22 situation where we have to put it on, on the ballot, or we lose by doing nothing. At least that's how I see it. And, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes, but if we continue to look at where our road's going, uh, we're, we're heading into the, you're going to have to tear it down and rebuild it totally area and it won't be long. And I don't see any help coming out of Sacramento for roads. I see them helping a lot of other things with their $1 billion surplus, but nothing for roads. And other cities in this county have told me through their mayors that, hey, we take care of our roads, why don't you? What's wrong with you? So they're not going to be looking to shed any sympathy towards an argument to the legislature that we could increase our tax rate either. They look upon us as being wasteful and so does a large portion of the public. I don't think I can support a general tax. I think I can support a specific tax, but I could also put, support putting both measures onto the ballot and letting the citizens make the call. And I think that's probably what I would be in favor of. Everybody has a different opinion on it. So if any of you wish to speak on it, I now see some names on here, we will do so. So council member Meester, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't, so as I understand, if we were to do a general tax, we could create some kind of a commission, an oversight commission that would, um, ensure that, that it was, I mean, I guess, I'm, I'm not quite sure how that works because you've got a general tax, you can spend on anything, but if we got an oversight committee, commission or committee, how would that work?
So if you were to, to create an oversight committee, that committee would meet with staff and take a recommendation to council on how the funds are being used. Ultimately, every financial situation, like what we're talking about, that final decision would be up to, up to council on how it would be spent. So it would just, it would be someone that if we wanted to provide a regular report to on how it would be spent, as we proposed the budget, on how the monies are going to be used, it would go through that committee and a recommendation would come out of that committee to council.
And could the tax measure language include the addition of a commission or a committee?
I believe that one of the languages that was proposed actually had language in there about possibly having an oversight committee, if I'm not mistaken.
And then, um, so I'm sort of intrigued by, um, having both the two thirds and in general on the ballot. I don't know how that would work and maybe our consultant can opine on it. The only concern I would be is that they might split the baby and both would lose. So, um, any opinion on that?
It could be really complex and interesting if we have two measures on and the county has one on, and then we have to try and figure out, um, which one prevails. As I said earlier, there is not a lot of guidance in the case law or in the statutes. There is a provision in the constitution, um, about, about referendums and initiatives that says that, uh, if there are competing initiatives, that the one with the most votes wins, presumably, uh, you know, it, it just, well, I mean, not presumably, it just depends on, on how it ends up. And it's a little bit different because we're all competing for this 2% cap that's left over. Um, so, you know, it, it's how you deal with that, you know, I mean, the, the, what winning, winning the ballot is one thing and then who gets the 2% is, is another issue.
And I'll just say that, you know, bringing this tax initiative forward to council is not something that we took lightly. But we also realize that we couldn't, even with the polling results, wait until 2024 to see if things were going to get better, because the money isn't going to come, is not going to come into the coffers automatically. So even if we waited to 2024 and the stars line up and we are successful raising the limit, we're actually talking about imposing a higher tax at that time, if the county is successful. So, you know, no, we're not probably recommending a two third measure or a competing measure on the ballot. We want to put a measure on the ballot that we can be successful with to address some of the needs in the community. So that's our recommendation. We're, we're actually not recommending that we go with a two ballot measure. We don't think that's going to help our chances of success.
Mr. Mayor, may I just clarify something? So, you know, on that chart, we showed the 9.25. So just for clarification, the state limit is 7.25 and then, and then local jurisdictions can go point, two points above that. So 9.25 is what's authorized under the current law. So you'll see, you know, Pleasant Hill as an example is at that cap, is what we would call the cap. And under this proposal that we've talked about tonight, Vallejo would also be at the current state authorized cap. There is an option for local jurisdictions to exceed the cap, but it requires specific legislation to do that. And, um, as you may recall, this council authorized a letter to be sent to Senator Dodd's office requesting that. And we have had conversations with Senator Dodd's office, who's expressed lots of support for Vallejo. The issue is one of timing, so we wouldn't have been able to do it this year because if a bill was identified and amended to include this language, it would have gotten to the governor in August and my understanding is the governor would have had until the end of September to sign it. So we wouldn't have known if our cap was increased prior to, uh, needing to go to the county. I've been in contact with Senator Dodd's office, who's expressed ongoing support and we could potentially engage them in, uh, enabling legislation for 2024. And as you all know, that there's lots of, that's very unpredictable, it's a wild card in terms of what bill is identified, how the legislature and the governor feel, it is a presidential election. So there is a political calculation in terms of how much support there would be for that. So, but that is a potential option if we looked ahead to 2024.
No, I, we've talked about that and I agree with it. If the county was not moving to put a competing measure on the If the county was not moving to put a competing measure on the 2022 ballot, I would be in favor of waiting until 2024. But I think the action of the county under the present law forces us to make a decision. We don't, they're not giving us the leeway to wait, is how I see it. With respect to those Concord, Martinez, Pleasant Hill, I believe that also includes the 1% BART tax. There are BART, those are BART counties, we are not. So they're already at their maximum because of that, and they probably still have some leeway. Our dilemma is, what do we do if the county puts the fire tax initiative on the ballot and it passes? If it passes, we're done, absent an act from the legislature. And that's the dilemma we face, is to my way of thinking, we're better off putting our own competing measure on the ballot, just because they are. And if they withdraw it, then maybe we can withdraw it too by August 25th. But I think we're being forced into a decision. We don't really have any leeway. Councilmember Larry Adias.
Yes, I'm in favor of a tax measure, and I'm going to be very clear with what I say. When Measure G was proposed last time, I was not in favor of it. I voted against it. I donated to that campaign for it to not pass, because I didn't feel that it was specific enough and it was going to have the oversight that I feel is needed. The public had the measure fail because they didn't trust how it was written. But I think that with a proper public oversight body that's going to provide accounting of what the money is being spent on with the yearly audit, and as long as it's tied in some way to economic development, and what I mean by this is that we would utilize some of the money coming in to be able to have our economic development grow, because if we pass a general tax measure, I understand that it'll be easier to pass as long as people understand what we're trying to do and, you know, we educate folks on what is going to be done. So I can support this as long as we integrate in some way into this tax measure, that it would be strictly for the road repair and the paving that's here, and enhance the homelessness services, and that it's tied to economic development, because that's what's going to bring in some money to help us out. And also the code enforcement to address the illegal dumping. I think that anything else, like the building repairs and renovations and all of that, is part of the reason that people were not in favor of Measure G, because they figured that the money that was going to be coming in would be going to the police department on 400 Maryland Way. So I am in favor of it, but with a lot of restrictions and oversight and transparency and education for the community, I think that we can get this passed. Because, like you said, Mayor, you know, if people, me included, complain about the streets and the potholes and the homeless issue that we have and code enforcement and everything else, you know, we're not a rich city. We don't have a lot of money. So where's this money supposed to come from? You know, we have to pay for it. And the only way that I can see at this point is passing a tax measure that's going to bring in, you know, money. But as long as we oversee how it's being spent, I think that we're going to be okay.
Okay, well, I'll remind you and the others that a general tax means the final decision is that of this or any future council, no matter whether you have a public oversight or you're going to say on the ballot you're going to spend it for X, Y, Z. And of course, if you say on the ballot what you're going to spend it on, it could form the basis for saying it's a special tax and not a general tax. So you have to, you have to trust. And according to this voter survey, the trust is not present at all. That's one of our biggest difficulties.
Right, and I understand what you're saying, but there has to be a way that we can have a general tax measure on the ballot that incorporate some of this oversight body and the audit and, you know, everything else that I mentioned. Am I totally, you know, not correct?
You can incorporate the oversight body in the measure. That's very typical of measures that are done across the state, to have that feature in it, that there's a citizen oversight body.
What about the other items, as the mayor was saying, that they might be considered a specific tax?
Yes, you cannot limit the ability of the council to spend the money any way the council desires to spend the money, or it would be a special tax. What a lot of jurisdictions do is put on a parallel ballot measure that's non-binding, where the citizens can tell you how they want the money spent, and that's where you would list those things. So that's a possible way to do it as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Reisner. Is it permissible, legally permissible, to exclude certain things in the ballot description so that people won't believe we're going to spend money on that? For instance, the survey. A large majority of the people said they did not want to see a new police building. So if we don't mention police buildings, or any other city building for that matter, is that permissible? Or do we have to cover the whole genre of what we might spend it on?
It needs to be written as a general tax, and needs to be understood as a general tax, in my opinion. And you don't have to specifically say that you're going to spend the money on a police station or any other building, or any other project for that matter. And typically, we try to keep the language as general as possible. There were some samples that were on your screen this evening in the presentation of potential general taxes that had a laundry list of things. The more things we put in, especially in the general tax, the more, the stronger the argument is that it's for general stuff, right? Whereas if we put just one or two things in, then the argument becomes, you know, better that it's a special tax. So the wording is very important, and you have to be careful, but based, your question, Mr. Mayor, is yes, I think there's a way to draft around saying specifically that we're going to spend money on a police station, or anything else for that matter.
Well, when we look at that survey, there were 48 areas in which a majority of the people felt money should be spent on. That's an awful lot. But police station was not one of those 48s. So what I'm struggling with is how do you write the ballot measure description that incorporates those 48 items, but does not incorporate the things that people didn't reach the majority level on?
I would be very hesitant to put anything in the measure that says we're never going to spend money on X.
Yeah, no, we can't do that. That's clearly illegal. I mean, that's, we can't bind the hands of future council.
Right.
We all know that here. What I'm talking about is how do you, how do you sell the measure to the public? And what I'm getting at is, since the public doesn't trust the council, doesn't trust city government, doesn't believe that we are properly managing the available funds, how do we make the argument that we want to see it go towards police, or towards buildings, or towards what I think it should go, which is roads and code enforcement? So I'm in agreement with Councilmember Larry Adias on those two points. But I'm just saying, how do we, how do we do the word smithing necessary to get that message out to the public?
So could I say something real quick, just for the sake of complete transparency here? We are working on an assessment of converting JFK into the police facility and converting 400 Maryland Way into a library. We're going, if the council direction is to do those things, we need a revenue source. We will need a revenue source. And even if you look at what Terrence showed you about the facilities, to just keep Amador up and running, we need $10 million, $11 million that we do not have. So if we're talking about putting language that restricts us from taking care of our facilities, we're still in the same quandum when we talk about the police building and how do we get those people out of a location that we've deemed unacceptable for our people to be working in. So I would just caution council, as we move forward, if we're going to move with the ballot initiative, that the reality that we're facing, we still have to address those issues. I don't see how we can go forward with not, and not have a plan to address those issues. We have not only sworn officers working in those facilities, but we have a number of unsworn staff in that facility, and we could reiterate again the horrible working conditions that those people are in. So just keep that in mind as you're having this debate about the tax revenue, because in order to do any of the things that we've talked about, including addressing the problem with our police location, we need a new source of revenue.
Okay. Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I supported Measure G because I, it was very obvious back then that we have a lot of needs that are completely unfunded. So I am supportive, again, of a general tax, because that is what we actually need. The results from the polling showed that unless all of us are on the same page together, it's probably not going to be successful. That being said, I know we have to try, because we have certain things we have to deliver to this community, and if we don't do every effort to accomplish those needs, then what are we doing as leaders? It concerns me very much when I hear comments such as, "A vote to put it on the ballot doesn't mean it's a vote to support the ballot measure." I think that is duplicitous to our constituents. It makes it very confusing and makes it confusing for all of us here on the dais to try to work together when we know clearly we have a very large need. I mean, just our streets and roads alone, $30 million just to keep us where we're at. So that number went up since the last time I looked at that. And so, you know, it's like, we hear from our constituents on a daily basis how we are not meeting the needs of our constituents today on a variety of things. And the trust in us is low, because we are not able to perform the duties they expect of us on our current revenues. So unless we take action and are on the same page and pulling together as a team to solve the challenges that we have as best we can, because even this .875 isn't going to solve it. It's not going to be a golden, you know, wand. But we have to do something, and we have to give it the best chance that we can of success. And the only way that that's going to be possibly successful, and I'm totally excited about the two measures where you have one that gives more, gives the, that's not, you know, tied to the ballot measure, the tax measure, but it gives the voters the ability to have some say in how it's spent. So I'm excited about that. But I hope that all of us here can be on the same page and find a way to do what we can within our means to actually deliver the results our people expect and deserve. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say some similar comments. You know, we, one of the things that we have as a council, as leaders, is our fiduciary responsibility to this town, and we will get critics that don't want to see a tax. That's par for the course. But, you know, this is a problem that's existed since bankruptcy. You know, we've got a, we've got a strong reserve and a balanced budget, but what we don't have is the infrastructure that we need, and that's been neglected for years and years and years and years. We've never been able to truly address it. And frankly, a vote to put a two-thirds ballot, measure on the ballot is a no vote. If you're voting to put a two-thirds measure on the ballot, you're voting no, because that, it's right here. You know, unless you're a gambler that thinks you're going to win, it's right here. We're not going to get that passed at all. And it's our responsibility, fiduciary responsibility, the leaders of this city, to provide the resources. And there's no magic wand. There's no magic wand, and it frustrates me that I keep hearing this sort of magic wand discussion, like a two-thirds ballot. It's not going to win. That is not going to win. So let's be real about it, frankly. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bertolino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We need to put a general tax on this ballot. I will support a general tax, and you know why? Putting a measure that requests two-thirds vote, I agree, it's not going to pass, because this council is divided already. Unless this council unites and work together to vote yes on a general tax, then we will get the 50% plus one. But unless we, as a council, vote 5-2, 4-3, then it reflects, the leadership reflects the division. The division in this council reflects the community. We're leaders. We're elected leaders. We have constituents who will support an initiative if we say yes, let's support this. It's very obvious. The survey calls for the top three issues: homelessness, roads, crime and public safety. It's not just in our city, it's all over the county. County, they did the survey, the top three issues are homelessness and roads and mental health. So, you know, it's so very obvious, it's glaring right here in our faces. And like I said, I'll support a general tax campaign to, so that it will pass, and I'll ask my fellow council members to vote yes and campaign, because that's how you get votes, people to vote yes. And I hope that, you know, we get it right this time. So otherwise, we'll be coming back here in 2024 and putting the same measure, and I don't know chances of that passing. It's, the time is now, and we'll have to bite the bullet, and it can pass, it will pass, if we campaign and work together as a team. Otherwise, then forget it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilmember Oriola.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is very confusing to me. I remember two, three months ago, with our one-on-one meetings, Mr. Malone and Terrence, you were there as well, we toyed around, we toyed around with the possibility of a road tax, of bringing tax measure to council, specifically for road repair, because we were discussing the pothole vigilantes and that whole thing. And I, and I replied with perked-up ears. I said, "If it was going to go specifically, if this tax idea that you're talking about is going to go specifically for the roads, I will be the first one out there championing for it." And I believe the people of Vallejo would agree with me. Now it's changed into all kinds of things, and now it looks like it's turning into a miniature general fund, as opposed to the general fund proper. And I have a problem with that, because getting together a commission and overseeing all of that, and Randy, I know you said it's common, common practice for that, but have we ever done it? I don't know how that's going to, how that's going to work. So regarding the facilities, the chart that you provided for us, the 10-year cost for JFK Library was just for the upkeep and not, so I don't know where the money, because I know that you're doing, it's due back to council, the research that you're doing on the JFK Library. So you're going to come back to us with that amount. But the, yeah, so these numbers here are just for upkeep, to just keep our head above water with those buildings. I, I'm not for a general tax. I would be for something very specific on this one. Thanks.
Can I respond real quick here, Mayor?
Mr. Malone, go ahead.
So Councilmember Arrow, I just wanted to...
So, Councilmember Ariola, I just wanted to, when we talked about the tax measure initially, our thought was for the roads when we first started. We also had a plan to address the police building problem. We got different directions from council in regarding to police building, which required more revenue and a higher debt to address those issues. So, yes, we had to change our tactics and our priorities and include if we were going to actually do something with the police building in the tax measure. So it was, we had to, our plan had to change. So we had to be fluid based on the direction that we received from council. And I believe that we kind of expressed that once things changed, that we would have to conclude that, too. Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Lorreadias.
Yes, I will support a general tax measure. I think it's important that we take care of what the city needs. I do, however, specifically want to have an oversight body that's going to review everything, that's going to hold us accountable to what the people want to see. And then the attorney, Randy, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. The parallel nine-binding portion of it, I would like to see that. I would like to see the oversight. And we do need a general tax. I realize that we did discuss the roads because that's what was happening at the time with the vigilante folks that were out there. But there's a lot of things that need to be done, not just the roads, you know. And we owe it to the residents here to have a decent, safe, you know, prosperous, hopefully, you know, we can tie some of this to some economic development, place to live. If it's not now, I don't see when this is going to happen. I think that, you know, everybody on here wants accountability. So if we put that portion of it in there, that we're going to have that oversight. And then we include the portion where the folks that live here are going to tell us what they would want to see, that covers the bases and we're able to do more than what we would set out to do. So I, I will vote for this. I will campaign for this. I will translate into Spanish, you know, anything that I can help with so that it passes, but it needs to have oversight. It needs to have the eyes of eagles over this and I'll support it.
Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just would say that, thank you, Councilmember Lorreadias, I agree. I support those ideas. And to Councilmember Ariola, I get where you're coming from. Yeah, back then, that is what we were talking about. And then things changed with the JFK Building, 400 Mare Island Way. And that caused us to have to shift strategies. But regardless of all of that, I think we can all agree that we know we don't have enough revenues to do all of the things that our residents expect us to do. I think we can all agree on that. And I think that by saying we won't put a general tax on the ballot, we're denying our residents the ability to have a say on whether they want to pay, to be able to support more than just streets and roads. And I think that would be a tragedy to take that ability away from our constituents.
Councilmember Meester.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to point out, in the FM3 slide number 25, the special purpose particular question falls to 47%. It wouldn't, it's not even enough for a general tax. And so I want to say it again. If we decide to put a two-thirds ballot measure, it's not going to win. And I, it is very frustrating because I wish we could have a ballot measure that was special. And I just don't really understand, it should be flipped. I've always thought it should be flipped, like the special tax should be 50% because you know where it's going to go and the general should be higher. And I think we would have avoided a lot of pain if that had been the case. But again, you know, a two-thirds, you know, I'm not a gambler. And when I, I know I don't lose, I never win at gambling, so I never gamble. But I've lost enough quarters in my life. But this is a, this is a total no winner. Slide number 25 is a no winner. Two-thirds tax is not going to win. And I also totally support the Oversight Commission. And I think, you know, I'm hoping that'll put enough pressure on future councils to keep it where it should be. And, you know, I think when Measure B first passed, I thought the council did a great job, or not the council, the city staff, finance staff, did a great job of tracking how Measure B finances were spent. So I think we could do the same thing and spend it well and address a lot of problems that we have. Thanks.
Okay. I see no further requests to speak from council, so we'll call on our in-person speakers first. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Ruskel, Kang Young.
You have three minutes, Mr. Kang Young.
I agree with Councilmember Ariola. This general sales tax proposal is going to also turn into a mini general fund or slash fund that I see. I'm opposed to pursuing a general sales tax measure increase for the following reasons. For those that remember, four years ago this month, while I was serving on the school board, I wrote a letter to the newspaper to share with the public why I voted against moving forward with a school bond measure. And I raised the following issues then, and that is still true to this day. And I'll share some points from that letter. One, let's review. Due to Measure 3, bridge tolls will soon increase. Vallejo City water rates are increasing, the garbage rates recently went up, and city sewer rates are increasing 20% per year for the next four years. On top of that, the Vallejo City manager is now proposing more sales tax, end quote. Many of these issues then have become reality these last four years. In the near future, we're possibly looking at turning Highway 37 into a toll road on top of paying water and sewer fees and paying off past bond measures. I know from experience, money generated from this proposed sales tax measure will just go into the general fund. City management will just determine how to spend it and it'll just go into salaries, benefits, and fancy perks. There hasn't been a history of city management's wasteful spending and mismanagement, such as, one, purchasing that house for staff next to the water plant while we can't help the homeless, to taking out $1 million from the general fund this year to pay for the mistakes of a contractor for cleaning up Mare Island. We have City Hall closed on Fridays while we, while we as public servants should be accessible as much as possible during the week. And we have city administration that only work in the office a few times a week and don't even live here. This proposed sales tax measure will make Vallejo one of the highest in the county. We're not Concord, we're not Pleasant Hill, or even Martinez. We don't even have the tax base. I respectfully request a no vote on moving forward with this. We must get our household in order. We must stop the wasteful spending and stop the special perks. We must look for alternative funding, such as a tax on Airbnb. They're an impact on the city quality of life. A vacancy tax on vacant properties, commercial and residential. Also, we need to get our, more of our fair share from Regional Measure 3, the bridge toll increase, as well as from the county and state, as the state has a $97 billion surplus. We must protect homeowners, seniors, and renters with financial responsibility and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kang Young. Do we have any further in-person speakers? We have none. Do we have any virtual speakers, Naveed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have three speakers.
Three? Okay, go ahead and call them each, three minutes.
Melissa Swift, go ahead, please.
Mayor and Council, tonight we are hearing from the same survey consultants in FM3. They were hired by former city manager Greg Nyhoff two years ago that told you that it was a wise choice to move forward with Measure G, an identical regressive sales tax measure being presented to you tonight that was voted down by voters. We spoke then and we said no. And this failed sales tax measure cost taxpayers more than $500,000. And now here we are again, two years later, with these same consultants hired by Nyhoff, this time rehired by current city manager Mike Malone, to sit here and try to convince you, based off of a push survey that only included 500 Vallejones, that this is something you all should support. We had 5,000 Vallejones sign a petition against the police station at 400 Mare Island Way, and Malone and certain council members dismissed us by saying that was not a representative sample. To be clear, as you heard tonight from FM3, this is not a scientific survey, so the results cannot be trusted. Just look at the ridiculous margin of error. This is propaganda and it cost us $100,000. Why are we here doing this again? Because you decided to pick Mike Malone as city manager without going through a competitive hiring process. You said this would bring stability, but all we're seeing is the same toxic management we had under Nyhoff. We told you that Malone, who was a Nyhoff crony and wrote the support letter for him, would not be a change, an agent of change for the city or deviate from the failed pattern of toxic Nyhoff mismanagement. This is illustrated by the fact that we have seen hundreds of employees flee the city since Malone took over last October. And tonight, we have yet the latest in a long list of examples of the continuation of that mismanagement. This is not the stability that you promised the community. Instead, Malone is charging ahead with a tax hike that stands to take $18 million a year out of the pockets of our residents and will drain $500 million from our pockets over the next 25 years. And for what? Roads and infrastructure? We all know this is a lie. We know from the questions being asked by the survey company that this is a thinly veiled ruse to pay for a new police headquarters and is being proposed as a general purpose tax instead of a special tax because it would never pass if Malone made clear his actual intentions, which, as we saw with Measure G, are opposed by a majority of Vallejones. You know, and Mike Malone certainly knows that if this regressive tax increase passes, Malone will have no obligation to spend the $18 million a year on roads and infrastructure. Instead, he will have an $18 million a year slash fund to spend as he sees fit. This is wrong. You know it's wrong, and the community knows it's wrong. Malone hopes he can fake his way through this and fool the community that this is actually about roads and infrastructure, but we all know what is really happening here. We see you. Yes, we need investment in roads and infrastructure, but not like this. Council, you set the funding priorities for the city and you continue to choose to...
Thank you. Would you call our next speaker, please?
Ann Carr, go ahead, please.
Hi, sound check. Please confirm you can hear me?
Yes.
Thanks so much. So I am opposed to the idea of a general tax and completely do not trust the city, I am sorry to say, about how to direct that. And even if there was a commission, which, oh, by the way, would only provide a recommendation to council and the city, I still don't think that's enough of a protection for making sure that the tax would align with what citizen priorities are. If there was a special tax, maybe, but I think, looking back at the survey that your own consultants did, the top concerns, that slide is saying, "Top concerns focused on homelessness, public dumping, and issues related to public safety." Even though road condition has been a hot button, it didn't make it into the top four. And so that is a correction that should be noted by Vice Mayor Berdor Aliga. She said the road condition was number three. That's not the case. So what I would like to see is for the city to actually follow the recommendations and the input you've been getting in your own surveys. So when Felicia did a survey of the community for how to use the ARPA fund, I recall that homelessness was the number one concern, but that didn't direct how the city decided to spend the ARPA money. When the city wanted to find out what the community thought about locations of a police station, the Amador Street location was number one, and yet the city didn't even present those results. So in terms of this idea that we should trust the city to listen to the community, we already see that they don't do that. And so that makes the whole general tax really a non-starter for me. And in particular, what's called education by the city ends up being a push survey or basically ends up being propaganda. The way you guys marketed Measure G, you might as well have said, "Gosh, do you like puppies and sunsets and ice cream? Gee, vote for us." It's about that misleading. So I think that you need to be really clear with how the money's going to be spent. And frankly, I, it really makes me uncomfortable to hear other people on council try to intimidate others by saying, "Well, gosh, we have to be united and go forward for this, with this." I think the council needs to reflect the whole community, including the people who have some dissent. So what I would like to see is for the city finally to start looking at innovation and ways to spend money that, with the money that they have. And I don't see the city doing that. So it's a very sad thing to me. And yes, we need more money, but I think the city wastes a lot of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our third and final speaker, Naveed.
Tara Beasley-Stansberry, go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and everyone present. I do share the same sentiment as you shared earlier, that unfortunately, there is a lot of mistrust from the public and from the residents and from your constituents. And those are for obvious reasons. And I do agree, while I agree with councilwoman Do on how do we move forward, and we do need to move forward, and, you know, you as current council should be showing a united front. Unfortunately, we know that that's not happening. And so tonight is a very interesting time to start and to be able to do that. And so unfortunately, because we haven't seen that strong united front ever before, of course, the public is unfortunately not going to have a lot of faith overnight. And that trust has to be built and earned. And so I just wanted to point that out before I get started. I would be in support of a tax measure only if we could somehow also appropriate those dollars to small businesses. I've mentioned before of Vallejo City revolving loan fund, similar to the revolving loan fund that they have in the city of Richmond, where those funds would be allocated towards a small business loan for our, for our small businesses, ranging in the range from $5,000 to $75,000. And of course, that would come at a low interest rate. And the bottom line is that if we don't invest in our businesses, if we don't invest in our economic development, of course, our residents and our constituents will continue to shop otherwise, other areas. We do know that, of course, you, increasing sales tax, of course, people are going to always buy things, but they, they make their choice to buy things in Vallejo. They don't have to. It's their choice. And so if we are going to give them a, if we are going to increase tax, then I think we need to give them the best choices that they have available and giving them some, giving them opportunities and giving them different, different options. Right now, we don't have a whole lot of options because a lot of our small businesses are failing. They are very weak in structure and we need to help them now. And also, we know by helping our small businesses and increasing our economic development and our growth and our vitality, we know that our residents, that is what is going to keep our residents satisfied. That is what is going to increase those revenue, that tax revenue and those dollars coming in. Thank you. I really think, yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Perhaps that completes all of our speakers, right?
Yeah, this concludes all the speakers.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we direct staff to return on July 12 with the necessary actions to submit a 0.875 transaction and use tax ordinance for consideration by the voters on November 8, 2022 ballot. And can I add the Oversight Commission here and to include the oversight, inclusion of Oversight Commission on this recommendation?
And for purposes of clarification, the direction includes it to be a general tax?
It will be a general tax, yes.
Thank you for that motion. Does everybody understand the motion? Any questions? Councilmember Lorreadias.
Yes, Mayor. I also would like to add the parallel verbiage on the ballot that, that we mentioned.
Sorry, the what? Verbiage?
Yes, I accept the amendment, yes.
I'm not, I'm not following you, I'm sorry. The parallel language.
Yeah, you're gonna, you would, you would add a parallel measure that is non-binding where residents or voters would have an opportunity to let you know how they'd like to have the money spent.
Okay. So that would be a second measure, right? Chair will move the division of the questions. Chair will move the division of the questions, first one being the general tax only and the second one for an advisory opinion. Please vote on the first one, general tax only.
General tax, right?
That's right.
So the motion carries with Mayor McConnell and Councilmember Ariela Post and Councilmember Brown absent.
And then the second half is to ask for an advisory opinion by the public. Please vote on that one.
All right, let me restart. That motion carries with Councilmember Brown absent.
Okay, that concludes the action item for tonight. We'll move on to the next item, which is a presentation on economic advancement. Do we have a presentation on that? Navid, would you please start the two-minute clock on that one?
Thank you, mayor, vice mayor, council. Very happy to be here. Christina Rockcliffe, Planning and Development Services Director, and to my right, well, I will let Paul introduce himself later on this evening. And being mindful of the hour, we will try and go as quickly as possible while still giving you valuable information. So this is the... This is the third quarter report for Planning and Development Services and Economic Development. We were before you a few meetings ago, but it ran late, so we are before you today. Next slide, thanks. Just talking about a few things going on in Planning and Development Services, that's the Planning and Building Divisions. The two top pictures that you're looking at are Eden Housing early on. I have some more pictures there. Its project is currently under construction, located at 2118 Sacramento. There will be one manager's unit and 74 supportive housing units. It's going along great, happening very quickly. Below, those two pictures below are the Team Chevrolet. It's a new two-story concrete masonry accessory structure located on Autumn Mall Parkway 301. And that structure is to be used as an automotive service annex supporting existing sales and service buildings. Next slide. Here's a few more examples or pictures of Eden Housing Project going together. I think some of you may have been out there to observe some of the pods being placed there. It's really quite remarkable how quickly it goes together and how very fast it goes together. Next slide, please, thanks. This is not new construction, although this is a renovation of the Longshore Cove over on 201 Main. I just wanted to call your attention to it. It looks really great. The top picture has just a fantastic mural that's right on the kids' playground. If you do have a chance, go on by there. It's just a nice example of what you can do just with tenant improvements, interior and exterior. Next slide. And here we have a couple more projects. The top two pictures are the Seven Flags Car Wash. This is under construction, it's almost done, at 2035 Solano Avenue. It's a new car wash, two stories. The main level is 3,118 square feet. It's a large car wash. Project valuation is a little over $2 million. And below, we have PetSmart. This is another tenant improvement. It's a facelift for the existing PetSmart. Store is located at 952 Admiral Callahan Lane. Next slide. Just wanted to talk about a few comparisons year over year for the third quarter. This is on the left of the slide is the building permits, the number, actual number of building permits. As you can see, we are increasing this, the number in gray for the third quarter, 2122, again topped the last quarter, the quarter before, and certainly the quarter, the third quarter before that year over year. So we are continuing to climb on building permits. The planning permits are a little lower than they were last year. I do have to clarify that planning permits, while they may be lower, they are for multiple units. So one permit would be for multiple number of units or projects. Next slide. Fiscal year, building and planning revenue comparison. I just wanted to note that we are showing the fiscal year 2122 proposed is that horizontal striped line bar line. The gray is where we are at the third quarter, so we have a little bit more now, but it's about a million off. We have some very large plan checks in right now, and it's, I think we're going to meet or somewhat exceed that proposed, the proposed numbers for the building planning, or the building revenue. And the planning revenue, I'm not so sure we're going to meet those numbers, but we may. We are expecting several large projects in, and it all depends on if they get them in within the next three weeks or so. Next slide. This slide was particular. A couple of council members asked about the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit, applications and comparisons. So this is not by quarter, this is by fiscal year. And as you can see, 1819 and 1920, we are not doing that many, 39 and 35. And suddenly, it shot up in fiscal year 2021, which is when the state changed their accessory dwelling unit law, making it easier to permit, actually mandatory to streamline the accessory dwelling unit process. And the gray bar, which is 51, that's fiscal year 2122, and we're not done yet. And I can assure you, we have a lot more accessory dwelling units in process right now. It's really increasing pretty dramatically since then. Next slide. And just looking ahead, as you all know, the three-element update, that's the housing element, safety element, environmental justice element, is moving along. These are pictures from Dia del Nino, it's our initial outreach, more outreach is planned, and more research is going on as we work with the consultant. Next slide. Also looking ahead, and you may have noticed, the corner of Sonoma and Magazine Streets, that's a market rate apartments, they're, I think it's 124 units, and they have just started grading in the last week and a half or so. So you may have noticed some activity on that site. The building plans are in and under review right now, so we expect those to be plan-checked and reviewed pretty quickly here, and they're moving pretty fast on that one. Next slide. And we are working actually with Economic Development on Solano 360, the specific plan update. We are meeting every other week or weekly with the county and the applicant. They submitted a preliminary review to planning. It was very conceptual, received feedback from city staff, and that's, they went through our TPRC process, so they receive feedback from planning, building, public works, water, wastewater district, fire, everybody. So that was great, and they are working to incorporate city comments into the plan and hopefully submitting the application, I would hope soon, I would hope within the next month or so. And just to wrap PDS up, in addition to the larger projects, we are doing the bread and butter projects of processing planning and building permits on a regular basis, working on zoning code cleanup, new permitting software started this week. It's, we are in a soft, open phase, so we're still working out some of the kinks, and thank you, IT, wonderful IT, and Navid for helping us along with that. And just to note that that permitting software is not only planning and building, but it's also public works, PD, and fire. And later this year, there's going to be a building code update. Building code is updated every three years, this is that year. One thing we want to do is retain, increase, and train staff. Happy to note that today, I'm sorry, yesterday was the first day of our new associate planner. So we have a new associate planner onboard, and of the 20, as of the 21st, we will have a new assistant planner onboard, which should really, once they get trained, really help us out and help push these projects through even faster. And I wanted to leave you with two really big numbers, why we are so busy. The dwelling unit for discretionary permits being processed now is 1,330. So right now, we have those permits, and those include single-family homes as well as multifamily. Those are the market rates. They didn't include the preliminary review that the Broadway Village went through, that was not counted in that number, but we could add that to it. And then in preliminary review, we have 811 dwelling units. And just to give you an idea of that, last year, the building department issued 37 dwelling unit permits only. So this year, we're looking at a lot more. So hopefully, we'll get up. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Paul Kelly, Special Advisor to City Manager and Economic Development Manager.
All right, thank you, Christina. And we'll just jump right into it. You can see there's a lot going on in Planning and Development Services as well as in Economic Development Division. Just go to the next slide, since that's just telling us what we're going to review. As you recall, in March of 2022, the North Mary Island Disposition and Development Agreement was approved. Just wanted to update you all that it finally got through all of its signatures and was signed on May 24th, and one of my staff members and I went down to the recorder's office and recorded it, just to make sure that all was done with that. Also, escrow is open, there's monies that have been wired back and forth, a lot of the due diligence has already been done, but much to be done for the next 60 days before closure. The other item is that you might recall, there was a commitment by the developer to fund a planning person, and we have a consultant that is providing those services. They've already started the work on looking at a updated specific plan, the Conley Corridor entitlement process, beautification, planning processes as well. All of those are underway. Next slide, just a picture reminding us of what the Conley Corridor looks like, and at least the way they presented it. Next slide, on the Northern Waterfront. This is one of our long-suffering projects, but I do want to report that they have submitted a whole bunch of new materials and updated applications, including an updated park plan. And yesterday, submitted multiple boxes of all of that material in a response to some of their incompleteness letter, and their engineering has been submitted. They've been through the TPRC program, and so all of this was a response to comments that came in from all of the different divisions and departments. So next is, as you know, we're under a tight timeframe as it relates to that one, to get it done by the end of the year. Central, just really here to remind us all that we did clear the title on that, and really it's ready for next steps and in discussions with both the Planning and Development Services Department as well as ours about ways in which we can re-envision the next steps for the Central Waterfront. Most of you have had a chance to tour the finally activated cleanup on Southern Waterfront and PG&E. There's, as we know, we commenced last year and really got active this year, as well as looking into the future, what next steps are visioning in the coming year. It's a five-year cleanup process. Next slide. Just a few pictures. If you haven't been out there to see that, right, the one left, upper left, were those old funky buildings around the, around the parking lot near the boat launch, some of the fencing. Next slide. You've seen the immense tents that are out there. There's a lot of cleanup activity that are going on inside of that, as well as some of the other cleanup activity. The other thing, next slide, just showing these two because really the interaction with our Planning and Development Services Division, you know, the grading permits, the building permits as it relates to the tent, excuse me, all part of that coordination of working with PG&E in the cleanup. And really, an important, when you consider, they've budgeted $100 million plus for this cleanup, so an investment in our community to be useful land into the future. Next slide. This one was already covered by Planning and Development Services, so I am just going to skip over that, considering time. This is the concept that some of you have already seen, and was sort of the framework of what they went through the TPRC for. Next slide. Just in our division, a couple of items, the Small Business Pandemic Recovery Grant, thanks to your approval of the contract with the Solano Workforce Development Board. We are working on that. It's taken a little bit longer to get the contracts signed, so they are on track, though, to get all their marketing out here in June with applications throughout June and July, and then awards more probably end of July and August. At the same time, there are, they've already started outreach to some of our restaurants to implement the restaurant resiliency program. Also, our Arts Commission, as you know, our staff, staff's, the Arts Commission, they are working on getting the contracts in place to get the art grants from the ARPA funds also distributed. Next slide, the other ARPA funds implementation, the Economic Development Strategic Plan Update, as mentioned and was approved, the contract with Dr. Eiler. He's already submitting all the subcontracts and consultants that he'll be using for many of the, some of the data crunching and outreach. He's also started his outreach and will, even though we haven't finished signing the contract, he's committed to reaching out to all of you, and he will be starting with you, the Economic Vitality Commission, and many of the other stakeholders as the outreach moves forward throughout the summer. Next slide. Also, we are thrilled to announce, we look forward when we have new employees to announce, Carly McLean has joined our division as our secretary, and there hasn't been a secretary in the Economic Development Division for the last two years, except for about six weeks. And so we're thrilled to bring on staff, and I think part of the reason to bring this update to all of you is that, you know, there's a lot of activity going on, including, we are attracting people to work here. We are continuing to oversee the grants administration and excited to announce that at least for the EPA grant, it took a long time to get the wires to connect with the federal government, but we have transferred money to pay for some of the activities. I put the Fairfield, Fairview Costco item on here primarily because you know that we've been waiting on the courts to make a decision. They have made a preliminary decision, and Fairview Costco is just waiting to see if there's going to be appeal to it, and I would just report that it's really all in favor of the city. I think it's a very good decision on all of the planning processes that the project went through, as well as the decision. And we are continuing to work on our Economic Vitality Commission implementation. Next slide. I think I did it in five minutes. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Raj. Any questions from council? Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great presentation. I was cheering along the way. So great to hear all of that. On the ADUs, how does that get counted in arena numbers? And how does that arena numbers, like, I heard 1330 houses, I'm like, does that meet our arena number for, because I don't know what income category they're in. So I'm just curious, like, is it, once they're built, that they satisfy the arena requirement? Or how does that work?
Arena numbers are counted when they are constructed. So they're not, they don't count them, ABAG doesn't count them if it's in the pipeline because something could happen. They count them when they're on the ground and have their certificate of occupancy. All of the numbers that I said that are in, those are all market rate. So those are not, you know, any of the low-income, moderate, or anything like that. We are, the, one of the primary tasks that we have is putting together our inclusionary ordinance and bringing it before the Planning Commission and Council so that we can ensure that that happens and that gets included moving forward.
That's great. So I was just saying to the mayor earlier how our largest number that we have to fill, our largest target in arena numbers is in the... our largest target in our RENA numbers is in the above the moderate income level. So it sounds like if these all go through, we just knocked that out of the park and we can focus on the other three categories. So thank you for that. And but ADUs, how do they, once they're constructed, what income category do they go to?
That is a really great question, and depending on who at HCD you talk to, you might get a slightly different answer. They are counted as certainly as dwelling units. When the last time I've spoken to them, they think they do count as some form of affordability because they're generally smaller
Right.
than the than the rest of the housing stock, although a lot of the ADUs that we're seeing are like 1,200 square foot ADUs, which is
Sure.
pretty much. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. There appear to be no other questions or comments from council members. That completes our agenda for this evening, and we are adjourned at 11:07.
Mr. Mayor. Public comment.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We're not adjourned. Public comment. I don't see any cards for in-person ones. Do we have any virtuals?
Ann Carr. Yes, we have one person.
Go ahead, Ann.
Hi, thanks. Confirm that you can hear me, please?
Yes.
Thanks, Bench. So I just wanted to point out with respect to economic development, and I'm glad to hear of our all of our activity, blah, blah. But I want to stress to council how important it is to take into account some of the pressing issues that face the city in terms of economic development. And I'm talking about homelessness, I'm talking about dumping, talking about safety and the street quality, and how that is going to affect what kind of investment we can expect in the city. And and to underscore how important homelessness is, that's been an issue that was raised by the Chamber of Commerce. It was rated as number one in Felicia's survey for how to use the ARPA funds. It's come up as number one again in your own survey. And so it's just really essential to provide some sort of solution and relief on that, and particularly on the west side of town, there are areas that are just continually impacted. White Slough, River Park, Couch Street, CBS has become the land of broken RVs, the downtown library, the enterprise area behind Denny's. Council and the city have to become aware that we need to do something both for dignity and also for the quiet enjoyment of the city by all city residents. I will tell you that in terms of safety, now that I've had my second brush with a catalytic converter being stolen or attempted to be stolen, that has put a chill on in terms of what where I might want to go in the city and how where I might want to spend my dollars. Apparently, the paid city parking lot for the ferry building is a hotspot. There have been a number of converters that have been stolen there, which seems crazy to me. So this really, this needs to get escalated if we want to be able to take care of city business. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that will conclude all of our speakers, I believe. Therefore, now we are now adjourned at 9:01:09. Thank you.